Doing well. I get a whole new role tonight. The agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, no one else? I'm sorry, I'm the Vice President. My first time doing the agenda, so bear with me. Is there anybody here in the public forum? Did you hear back from Kaylin?
So, what I did was I emailed her and then I called and left a message and I didn't hear her back, but she wasn't coming.
Okay.
So, I was assuming that she would be here. She might, and I made sure that we said it was 4:30, so she might be a little bit late. If it's all right with you, if she does come in, can we take her out of order?
Absolutely. I'm fine with that. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Excellent. All right, then we'll move on to 401, District Priorities.
Anything, and again, I can't remember on some of these, anything that, thanks, Kay.
Yeah, I did. Okay. One of our goals, we talked about annual progress report, but we also, when we created these tools last year, we really talked about, is it about the strategies that we're using to get there? And so, I just wanted to update, I met with each of my grade level teams about their ICVPs, which is their Individual Career Development Plans. And they work in teams and they, it's really action-based research on something they're implementing or a change that they're making. So, the first one is just briefly, I won't read through everything, but kindergarten, one of the things they noticed is sight words. So, we implemented foundations, and I know Sharon talked to you guys about that a couple, about a month ago. And with that program, one of the things we noticed our first years are sight words. We weren't seeing the same growth for sight words as we were with other things. And so, one of the things kindergarten team decided is we needed to increase the core instruction that all kiddos got, so they just added some different words and then that worked. And so you can see that 94% of our kids, so that's, that's a pretty stout benchmark in kindergarten for sight words, how fast they can read this individual little words that they should be able to know automatically, rather than words in context. First grade, their goal was very similar to second grade and they both were looking worse, worth their way is the program we had used previously for some of the phonics and spelling instruction in elementary. They used, we still use the same measure just to help us, so we could have some more longitudinal data with that. And so, but we were really trying to study the foundations curriculum as our new phonics instruction and how we do that differently and what that looks like. And so, you can see the first grade, at the beginning of the year, 47% had met the benchmark and there's a level that they should be at, number of words. And at the end, 97.9% of our kids met that benchmark. They, we always try to set our goal for being 100%, and we just figure like that's, we want all kids to be able to do it. So, and then second grade was the same, similar results, 33 at the beginning and 80% at the end. But one thing that second grade in particular took their data another step, and they wanted to see, are we moving kids like not just past benchmark, but like at higher levels? And so, you can see that, that over the course of three years on that same assessment, we have, we had 47% of our kids in 15, 16 who are one or more years above benchmark, and now we have 64% of our kids who are at that. So, we're pretty excited.
Can I ask a question of the day?
Yes.
So, when you, I see like first grade, just as an example, beginning of the year 47, end of year 97.9, okay, so is that, do we have anything comparable to like what's normal?
Right, so what we, and I'm sorry, I forgot to get there. I didn't put up there that piece of data. But like in the past, and I would, I can't speak out of turn, but I know that 97.9 was more kiddos that were at that higher level.
It was an improvement, I mean, or increase, I should say. Okay, thank you.
Do you, so Stacy, do you use that for the 20% that, in second grade that didn't? Or I mean, how, how does that work for them?
So, the same program, it's the same core instruction. What happens is for our kiddos who are, who may operate a little bit below benchmark, they, they might have interventions that are kind of reteaching that same philosophy and same idea and to get them up there. For the high kiddos, it was our concern because it is kind of a one-size-fits-all program. It doesn't have built-in differentiation. So, our concern was that we weren't going to see some of the kiddos at those higher levels. And so, we were excited. What, what's the difference, and I don't know how much Sharon got into the nuts and bolts of it, but one of the differences of this program, in the past, like you just wrote teach like here's what's short of, here are words. And here, there's a lot more opportunities for kiddos to not just be able to decode that sound, but encode at the end, which is the writing piece and putting it, kind of putting all those pieces together on that multisensory approach. So, we were excited to see that our kids, so for example, I'll use a second grade rule that's sometimes tougher for kiddos, is when you're going to use a C word rather than a K at the beginning of a word. And so, kids are explicitly taught when you do that, not just trying to just, well, here's some C words and here's some K words and memorize that. But they're specifically taught the rule that if a C is followed by an I or an E, it says C, but if the C sound is followed by an A, you, no, the other way. So, yeah, A, U, or O. I can take the class.
Right. So, I mean, those are all very positive, but I'm just curious for the 20%. So, end of the year, there was 20%.
For the kiddos who didn't get to that benchmark.
Do they, do they get, the teachers in third grade know that coming in?
Yes.
Or is there stuff that they get home with their parents for the summer or?
So, I would say the vast majority of those 20% are part of our kiddos, our group that are doing tutoring over the summer, using some of that to reteach and get some different ways in there. And then, we also do share that information with our data docs to third grade team. And then, that's where they can pick up, they don't have that same core program as foundations, but they have, just words. Just words, thank you. Just words. And that's a program that can be used at an intervention level that will carry them and get them up to that level.
So, the teachers in third grade kind of know what they've got coming in?
Exactly. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's good.
And that was a piece we just added actually this past school year to kind of bridge that transition, probably better than what we had been doing, because elementary does have title support that we don't have. And so, adding that just words as a component that they are used to, that same format, same language, it's just kind of that next step up to help them through that transition that they're creating.
Anyone else have anything that they would like to add to the district priorities that have changed this month?
Does it mean you're going to share in a little bit?
I'm going to share about our goals.
Other goals when we get to the administrative report.
All right, well, on that, nope. Anything else? All right, let's do it. Let's go to our administrative reports, 402.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say it was on there. I'm so sorry.
So, we had our preschool accreditation site visit this year. One of the things, in the past, we've been AC accredited, and I'll talk a little bit more, well, actually, go ahead and yell any of the things. So, just to give you a little, in case you're unaware, but I think most of you are, Gilbert preschool program, we have two classrooms, we have two sections each. So, we have four sections typically of about 16 kiddos. And then, we run four days a week, Tuesday through Friday, and then those are the times. So, for the past seven years, since the inception of our preschool program here, we were under the national certification. It was what Heather Kearns and I, who started the program, were familiar with, and so we just went with it. There were just some, really, the costs were starting to rise. There were some expectations on staff that we felt weren't necessarily commensurate with the position. And so, we made the change to the Iowa accreditation process, which is free and we like, it's also basically a riff off of the national program. So, it's not like a whole different set of rules or expectations. It did require our teachers to create classroom portfolios on over 111 different criteria. They had to have an artifact for each. And then, we, I created a program portfolio over some of those same things. We had a parent interview group for the, during the visit, and then they came and reviewed all of our files and just made sure everything was in order. So, this is just a, I'm not going to necessarily read every piece of the findings. I certainly can share with you the full report. This is kind of the overall like, yay, you guys are doing awesome. I'm so fortunate, awesome teachers and Heather and Colby. So, that makes my job a lot easier. But some of those specific things, I will go ahead and share really quickly. I'll go ahead to the, so here's just some of the positives. They specifically noted the staff had built strong relationships with all learners, the implementation of PDL in the preschool, which has been exciting, and the assessment to guide instruction, the family and community partnerships they felt were a real strength that we had here, our communication, our preschool teachers set the bar very high for all teachers after that, how many, how much communication they get. And then, all assurances were met, all required criteria were met. Out of 111 criteria, 106 were fully met. And I'm going to share with you some of the things that hurt my heart a little bit, but. So, one student, we had a student who entered the system late and we had not gotten him into the teaching strategy goal system, which is our assessment system. So, we were being assessed, all that data was collected, we didn't get that all to the computer. And so, that was, so we had to create an action plan of what we will do. We had the student in and all that was updated. And then, we did develop a checklist for when, in the future, kiddos come in new, that all those things that we would make sure to check for as we're, so we prevent that error. A menu of snacks should be available currently for families. We, in preschool still, were doing parent provide snacks. And so, there's really not a way to do a menu because you don't know in advance, to run advance. But we, we can use our preschool funds and we are planning on using our preschool funds to just school and provide snack through food service. So, that will make that easier and we'll be able to provide a menu. This was a, ultimately, my error, program associates need to be at the same level of training on the assessment and program standard as classroom teachers. In the world of IQPPS, they assume that teachers, that program associates are acting in some teaching capacity at some time throughout the day. So, that was, we did program professional development for all of the associates in the program. I just did not realize the level of which they might. So, that is all going to be taken care of in August. Jamie and Terry, Terry Nelson and Jamie Nellie, our program associates, will take some of those same modules that, to help get them up to speed on that. And then, the last is, we needed a fire extinguisher inside the classroom rather than the two steps around the corner in the hallway that they both relocated. And then, we need to maintain a monthly log of checking fire extinguisher, fire alarms, and all those things. And so, we did purchase the fire extinguishers, they're placed in classrooms. Right now, there's a little, some of the log we will establish. Next steps, we will continue. The accreditation continues, but now, every year, we just, they have about 10, a sampling of the criteria that we have to meet, and we just submit artifacts online, continue the preschool program operation. But one thing I think is important, and I know that you were all included, we've had these conversations in the past, I think alternative kindergarten continues to be a discussion point that we want to talk about in terms of early childhood, especially as the vast majority of our kids who had wanted that for the past, who found it Ames. And Ames, for the first year, said no Gilbert, or no outside resident, resident district kids are coming in for them. But things we need to think about, space. Right now, we use all the spaces, so we need to figure out where that fits in. And also, not just space at this very moment, but also, how does that affect if we need to go to six sections and we occupy the space in the building at that point. Student numbers, right now, I know, the first year we ran the program, when we, the two years we did it, we had 16 kiddos. Then, we had 13 kiddos year two. On my list, that third year, if we were to have run it, we were right around eight. And I know this year, I had eight potential kids who were going to go to Northwood. So, we have to, you know, there's just always that cost factor of how many kids you can run a program with. Transportation, since they are technically kindergartners in an alternative kindergarten program, we need to look at the fact that that's an added route in the midday that we would need to do. And it would likely run differently than our preschool. We have a few early childhood special education kiddos who run, are on the route, because we would likely need to run the program A to new. So, and that goes into that early literacy requirement. So, just knowing that funding, or we need to make sure we have like 90 beds of just literacy instruction that's happening. And so, that's one of those things. And then, lastly, and it's not lastly, I forgot about funding, knowing that those dollars of any other program, that funding would come in arrears. And so, we just always have to know, we have to have enough money to run the program on our existing budget rather than on the new student budget. Any questions about that or?
So, I just don't, I was wondering about that early K piece of it. So, I understand the information you're talking about that we would need to gather. But could you maybe give me a feel for how much time that, like is that, let's say that we did have knowledge that potentially the numbers were there, or you know, something, is that like a year's worth of work, two years worth of, like how soon?
To get all that into, I mean, to be honest, because we already run the program, I think we kind of have the, the basic blueprint in place for what we would need to do and what that needs to look like. So, I think for us, it's just a matter of when we want that budget allocation to happen and when we're, when we feel like we have all those pieces. Because, you know, it's definitely a program I would support having, and I think that there's some definite benefits to not sending our kids out of district if at all possible. So, I think that's something to explore.
Is there a certain timeframe that we need to have those numbers collected, or a method for understanding the interest, or you know what I'm saying, like?
Yeah. So, one of the things we could always do if we feel like, we probably are a little behind if we were going to actually start at this fall. But if we're looking a year from now, in the 1920's school year, one of the things we can always do is start kindergarten roundup a little earlier than we typically do. And we also have our base of our 64 preschoolers to pull from to see who's, if we were to throw that question out, who is interested, what would their numbers look like? It does also enter in a little bit to the matrix in terms of open enrollment, as those kiddos are considered kindergartners. So, if we allow kiddos at the open enrollment, we may have to establish a matrix and try and figure that, add that section of how that looks. Because really, once they're in, then they're in. And so, really having that conversation about how that affects our open enrollment matrix.
Stacy, would you say that we have enough capacity? I'm talking about providing for the curriculum itself, capacity, or are we under capacity right now for the need within our district, especially given the comments you made, whether that's alternative kindergarten or preschool, for kids before kindergarten?
Yeah, I would say if I were not going to add an alternative kindergarten program, which the benefits are there because of the, because of funding that you get for an alternative kindergarten program rather than, the other thing is, if we were potentially add a five-year-old paid preschool program, I do think where there, there is definite room in our early childhood programming, and that is an unmet need right at this point in time. One of the things we've been trying to advocate, and both Austin and myself have sent letters and my preschool teachers as well, there was a bill out in the Senate files, Article 98, and it really saw no movement in Education Committee. But basically, what it would allow is a four-year-old or a five-year-old to get state preschool. So, for those kiddos who know that they are likely looking at wanting to wait till they're six to enter preschool, basically, what it would allow them to do is, they could have their preschool year, their state-funded preschool either as a four-year-old or as a five-year-old. I think there's some policy decisions to be made around that. That was our hope with our one parent in particular. And so, we kind of had him on the list, and then we just couldn't see the movement that we hoped. And, you know, it's always a district decision whether we choose to allow those kiddos in as a tuition or just our existing program. But then, we always have to default to, are we, do we have an unmet need in our four-year-old program as well? And this year, we are back to having a little bit of a waiting list in our four-year-old program.
Right. So, I think it's, Deb, to your question, part of your question, I think it's been an ongoing issue or concern. And now, with Ames' decision.
Yeah, that really is.
I think that negatively impacts our district. So, I would suggest that it be something that we look into. And it may be too late for this fall, but we need to be ahead of those things.
Yeah, that's what, I think that was my, my, that I was getting to, just when do we need to start? Because it does sound like there's, of just researching and gathering more.
You know, obviously, it's not a vote. I'm asking for, but if, if the, you know, board definitely feels this is something, hey, let's, let's make sure we're, you know, doing that research earlier rather than later, then, you know, if that's something we can do right away, get going in the fall and make that decision and have it on our list of added positions.
I don't know that I speak for the whole board, but for me, I'd say, my question of do we have an unmet need, right? And if the answer's yes, then that's something that we need to know and we would want, you know, proposal and, you know, bring a recommendation. And if, I mean, I think we need to have those dialogues. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'd second that too. And I just want to, I want to say another thing, the, I think it was slide four or five, like all the great things that they wrote about the staff who run this program, like we talked a lot about the portrait of a graduate, but that to me was a portrait of a teacher. And that was really cool to read. And I think there's a lot of metrics around student success and all those things that get attributed to teachers. But to read these soft skill things, sorry, the slide five thing.
Or with the puzzle.
Oh dear, yeah, right. Like that's all like soft stuff around teachers that make, like that I like about this district. So, that's really cool to read.
Just adding another thing too, Carrie and I had the opportunity from the district office to go down and listen to their feedback from the, from the DE about that. And I know that, you know, Stacy had said, well, you know, she's kind of concerned about some of those, you know, the fire extinguisher, that's, that's a small thing. You know, you take a look at 111 criteria and 106 of those were met. I think they did an outstanding job. And if you have a chance to get down to see the preschool program, I think that they do a really great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Carrie, do you have some information?
Our annual, and I will send you this, sorry. Our annual goals that we do through SIAC are going to look a little bit, they look different in the fact that we don't have a SIAC member coming to give you new goals for next year, because we aren't going to have new goals for next year because we're taking a different test. So, but it is important for you to see how we ended for the year. And so, you can see, and I don't have to read them for you, but you can see that in red, in red, we met all of our goals. But I think one of the questions that has come up whenever we have this conversation is, yeah, my gosh, we're in the 90's, but what are we doing with all these kids? You know, what does that really, what does that mean? So, if you look at, for example, if you look at, at reading and it says that, you know, as fifth graders, 97% of the students were proficient in reading, but of those 97% of the students, which is almost everybody in the class, 62% of those students were in advanced group, which means that they were 90% or above on, on those tests, on that reading test. So, when we're looking at, you've got three proficiency levels. You've got advanced, which is 90% or above. You've got proficient, which is, can go anywhere from 40 to 89. And then, you've got your non-proficient students. Does that make sense? Well, then, if you look at those same, that same cohort of kids, that same group, so as fourth graders, they grew, proficiently, they grew, but they also grew in that advanced category. And I think that's one of the things that we hear a lot of, well, yeah, we're, how are we, are we really looking at that data? And our teachers are looking at that data. We're not just looking at, how are we going to move that one or two kids from non-to, non-proficient to proficient. We're looking at all kids. I think if you look, if you happen to move down, for example, down to science, and you can see that, you know, 97.5% of our students were proficient. Of that 97.5, 44% of those students were in the advanced group. I mean, that's almost 50% of the kids were in, were in the advanced group, 90% or above. But even better than that is, as seventh graders, 27% of those kids were in the proficient group, or were in that proficient, or the advanced group. So, even that advanced group grew by 16% from seventh to eighth grade. So, I think that those kinds of things, as, I think, you know, it's not just looking at the big percentage, but looking at those other smaller things, those smaller percentages, smaller groups too. And that, our, our advanced groups are big groups of kids. So, next year, at the beginning of the year, when we have more information on what that's going to look like, I'll, one of our, one of our reports at this time, probably in September, will be what that looks like. We don't have all the information. We have some of the information. We will not, we do not have a social, we will not have a state social studies test as of right now. We'll still be doing NWEA, that's our constant in keeping, but we don't have that for social studies, so just an FYI. So, we have, those are things the state's still working on. But, and for science, next year, I have to look for sure. I want to say it's five, it's either five, seven, and 10, or five, eight, and 10. It's only three grades that we'll be doing for the, that new Iowa assessment, which is called ICAP, if I remember right. So, but I'll do, I'll present, I'll give you some more information on what that will look like for next year. But anyway, just wanted you to have that information.
So, Carrie, I mean, this is good and these are kind of the state mandated thing. We've talked in the past about, well, what other kind of goals would we want around curriculum? And so, I don't know if we've been working on some of those things such that we're not just beholden to the state mandated, but what makes sense for Gilbert? And that's for all of the goals, right? I'm not sure where we're at for this year's goals. But for curriculum, I've been just curious if there's other measurements that you guys have talked about, either in administrative or at SIAC?
I think that that's something that, we talked about it at SIAC. We said that we really wanted to, we want to take a look and see what this new test looks like. But that's not saying that there's not other things that we can look at. We can dig down into subgroups. The problem, the issue with that is, our subgroups are very small, that we don't have enough of a population in some, in our subgroups to get in, to get into that data. Now, there's certain groups we can look at. I think it's important to know though, that our teachers in their PLCs are doing this work every week. I mean, they're digging in and they're looking at whether it's this data, whether it's classroom data, whether it's, so those, those, those goals are being set in the classroom throughout the whole year. Now, if we want to dig in and say, we want to report out on, on what that growth looks like, whether that's to you or to, that's to SIAC, we had that conversation at SIAC, and, you know, we could have that conversation here during work session if you want to do that too. You know, I don't know how far down, you know, I don't know how far down in the weeds you want to get, or if?
Well, from my standpoint, it's more of, you know, we talk about 21st century learning, talk about project-based learning. We talk about a lot of those things that we feel that Gilbert can lead in. And, don't take me wrong, this data is good, it's mandated, but that's exactly what it is. And every other district in the state does that. So, the question continues to come up with, how else do we measure? How would we have a measure?
Well, I think, we're doing that. I mean, I think we're going to be doing that Thursday and Friday when we're looking at our, the project-based learning units that everybody's turned in, and we're going to be scoring those through the AIW lens. So, I think we'll have that same data that we'll present to you after we have compiled all that. And we can see how does, what teachers expected of kids, how does that, how did their work compare to what the expectation for teachers are? I think that our IPI collection is exactly the same thing, looking at that student, looking at that student engagement. So, I think it looks, it's not, when you're looking at that, you're right, this, this might not reflect some of that. But I, I don't want to also throw this out the window and the fact that our teachers have worked really hard for this. And if we, I think if we say, oh yeah, this is well and good, I think some of our teachers might take that as a, that maybe we're not being really respectful of the hard work that they've put into this.
Yeah, it's not what I meant by any.
No, I'm not saying that you didn't mean that.
It's all how it's communicated. But again, we've had a conversation at the board level of what else, right? That can reflect some of the other things that you're doing and some of the things we're trying to do with facilities, 21st century learning, project-based learning. So, I'm just.
No, and I think that.
The thing that troubles me is that now we're sitting here handcuffed by the state.
Oh, I don't think, I just want, I, this was really kind of giving this to you to close the door on this because we're done with this.
But our goals, our goals won't be till September or later this year because we're waiting on this. And I'm just saying, I think we're doing a lot of other things that could come out and. And I'm just saying, I think we're doing a lot of other things that could come out and goals that we already have total control over.
I did not present that very well then. The state is not requiring us to report out like this anymore. So that's why, that is why PSYAC did not write any more goals. If this was more of, this is where we are, this presents this because we had this as a goal. It kind of closes the door on this type of goal at this point. But I do feel it's important for you to know how we are expected to, and that's the only reason I was saying, as we get into, to the new year, as to what our expectations are for state assessment, that's all I meant. But we will not be writing goals that way anymore. We aren't required, we will not do that. That, that's, this piece is over and done with now.
So PSYAC didn't write goals, but do you anticipate that we'll have goals leading into next year that look differently?
We will have expectations, districts will have expectations once they have their proficiency levels written for the new test, but they don't even have that yet because nobody's given the test yet. So they have to, um, once students in Iowa have taken this new test next year, then they will set those proficiency levels, seeing how kids perform. And then from there, there will be an expectation of how kids perform from that, at that point on. Now, there will be an expectation that kids continue to improve, continuous improvement. But, um, at this time, I'm not sure, it'll depend on where our kids fall. At this, at, at right now, but I mean, like I said, we don't all, we don't even have what, they have no idea what those proficiency levels will be. Because they're just in, they're just now finalizing what the test is.
Carrie, do you want to talk just a little bit, uh, you talked, or you started to talk about the fact of, looking at, uh, the, the different, uh, project-based learning examples, uh, the, um, scoring that'll be happening later this week. What actually, just in a, in a, like a nutshell, what actually happens from that standpoint so that, that, I think that's maybe where Tyler's maybe going with this because it's above and beyond.
Oh, definitely.
What we have there. You, you want to just explain how that works when, and again, I know that there's a lot to it, but just kind of in a nutshell.
Our, um, one of the things on our goals is our teachers, we ask our teachers to turn in a project-based learning unit. Along with that unit, they turn in, they have a lesson that they're highlighting, which is considered a task. One piece of that lesson that should score high on student construction of knowledge. From there, then with that lesson, they're also going to turn in student work that would match that, that goes with that lesson. So from that, if, if we are looking for, we'll score to see how this, does that task score high in construction of knowledge? Then we'll also, at a separate time in, in this two days, score the student work. Did we get what we thought we'd get from them? Is this, does the student work score high in construction of knowledge? Did, did the students perform the way the teacher was expecting them to perform? So then we do a correlation that we put the data together to see, did we get what we, do we have high construction of knowledge in the student work and in the task? Or do we have high construction of knowledge in the task, but low construction of knowledge in the student work or vice versa? Did the students actually perform higher than what the task actually demanded of them? So that's, that's what we'll be looking at. So we have, we have things from all buildings, from preschool all the way up to, to senior level work that we'll be looking at.
Is there enough confidence or stability in those numbers to make goals on around them and say like, hey, we want to see a three percent, five percent improvement or some level of number? I, I don't even know how these scores work.
No, that's a good question. And that's actually quite something that we were discussing yesterday as an administrative team as to, okay, first of all, we got to look and see what we get. Where, where did we, where are our teachers falling to decide then? What does that do for our professional development? What, what do our teachers need? Then what do we want, how do we push, how do we get to that next level? Like, you know, we could stay complacent and, oh, let's just keep doing what we're doing, or what's that next level? Because really, it should be about, we want each, we want each grade level to have that big, now, I don't want to say big, like everything stops and you're just doing project-based learning. But you want to have a, a bigger project-based learning unit at each grade level. But along with that, the next piece should be taking those elements of project-based learning and how are you infusing that into your everyday teaching? And that's the next piece of this. So that's, that's where we were going with, okay, so we've got these units, but how do we get to that next step that we're saying, what are we going to look for so that we can say, okay, yeah, you got this, but you don't, now that you're done with that unit, how do we know that, how do we know that that's happening in, in everyday teaching? Not just in that one week or that two or three weeks of that unit. So that's where we are right now, but we want, we need to, we also need to see, okay, where are teachers at? So we can meet them where they, we need to meet them where they are. And we have to remember, we got people in lots of different places. So just like we expect teachers to differentiate for their students in the classroom, we need to do the same thing. We can't have a one-size-fits-all because that doesn't work. But you're, I, I think that we're talking the same thing and, um, and then that other piece is that student engagement with the, with the walkthroughs and gathering that data. And we've got our leadership team that is doing that work too. So.
And there's like a third thing I'm looking at where the portrait of a graduate, like, how do we start measuring how we're doing along that and then making goals on that? Well, I feel like we're a year or two off from that, but like this is a pretty, it begins to be fuller feature than just.
And does, does that make sense to engage PSYAC in that? I mean, that's, that's kind of what it's coming from is that, and again, Carrie, please, I mean, I very much appreciate this and I appreciate that there are things that we have to do, but, you know, we've had the conversations and I don't even think it needs to be quantitative as much as maybe even qualitative to describe what this district is doing uniquely and what our expectations are uniquely.
When you said that about what's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, because I think I'm going in a different direction.
Are you sure?
I think I am.
Well, we, at our last PSYAC meeting, for example, we did that next step with Portrait of a Graduate, where we did, um, exactly what the staff members did, where we had our words on, we had group, the group, the words that you did and we had them in groups and the, the groups from PSYAC were looking at the words on a chart and saying, okay, what do these, what, what do these words have in common? What, what encompasses that word? And then how would you define that? What would be a good definition of that word? So now we've got that from staff members, we've got that from PSYAC. We were talking yesterday that, you know what, do we really have enough community involvement? So maybe we need to pull in some more community, maybe we need to, you know, we need to talk to, we talked about sending a survey out to the chamber and then not only the Ames Chamber, but then people that are part of the Gilbert community that are business community members here to also send that to those people too. Maybe having, um, inviting people in to just say, hey, we're looking for some focus group. We, you know, this is about our community, this is about, this involves everybody. And to what, what do we look, what do we, how do we name what our kids should, what do we want for our kids to be when they leave here? And it, it can't just be one or, you know, a small group of people naming that. And do we really want to wait until September to continue this? So maybe we need to, so we're charged with that now. So we're not, even though it's June, we're not stopping, we're going to continue on that so that when we get back with everybody in August, we've got, we're ready to roll back with our teachers on that next piece of that work.
You're exactly right from the standpoint of Portrait of a Graduate. We don't want it to be, okay, people are sitting in this room. I mean, we want your input, don't get me wrong, but we want it to be more than that. And that's why we were looking at, when we had our, uh, retreat yesterday, we were talking about, this should be something that, that's a bigger picture. And how does that work? And, and the big thing is we don't want to slow the process down because we have a somewhat of a goal that we have as far as where we're going to be this fall with this Portrait of a Graduate and where we need to be with that. So we've talked about, like I said, going out and checking with more people and sending out a survey so that we can, when people ask us, well, how'd you get that information? We can say, well, we talked to our PSYAC, we talked to our board, we talked to the, uh, you know, some of our business leaders. We, you know, talked to this group, that group, we talked to teachers, we talked to students. I don't know, maybe I, did I miss any? I think those are the main ones that we've, we just want to make sure that we cover all the bases.
And better to cover them now than when we're, and then be like, oh my gosh, why didn't we talk to, so. Um, no, I think they're all good questions. I hope I didn't sound like I didn't think that, but.
I just have a couple of thoughts that I wanted to throw out there because I, I do believe this is an amazing kind of book of work, right? And, and a lot of teachers spend a lot of time going into that, but, um, we were tossed around the idea of maybe just being out there a little ways, like, um, I remember when Mike had some kids come and they, they did passion projects, you know, increase the percentage of kids or the number of kids who maybe attempt or complete a passion project. Because, uh, and that's just an example, like I'm not suggesting that be a goal, but those kids just really felt like something really clicked with them, you know? And certainly that wouldn't be like a hundred percent thing. Not every kid would you expect to complete one, maybe. But, um, or something like with PBL where we're, are we measuring that? And I don't even know how to do this, but are we measuring something that shows these kids are learning how to work in teams better? Um, like, do you know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
You start off when you're young and you try to figure it out and really one person goes and work, you know? But do you ever, how do we, I don't know, is that in all those lines?
I think that when you talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, for example, when you said that, let's say you're talking about collaboration. A student, how does a student collaborate? And you look at, what does that look like as a kindergarten all the way to what that looks like as a, as a senior in high school? And what kind of feedback are we giving our students on that? And, and how are we teaching kids that? Because sometimes we make the assumption that kids just know how to do that. Where are we really teaching them what that means? And then are we giving them feedback on how they're doing that? So I think all that work that we're talking about is going hand in hand. But I think you're discussed, when you said that about, um, about the passion projects or how are we keeping, you know, I think we probably could do, we could do a better job on getting feedback from students on, what do they think about the Genius Hour Passion Projects? How do they, you know, when they are looking at, um, being part of the PBL, that kind of, how does that learning feel differently? What, you know, I mean, there's lots of ways we could collect data on that, which we, we should do that.
Yeah, or even just like, like I said, maybe just increase the number of kids who participate in one of those throughout the course of some period of time, because that feels to me like that kind of learning that everybody's always talking about where you're kind of self-directed, you're really kind of driving. I don't know, there's something like, some maybe one-off goal like that, obviously that's not maybe in line with all the others, but.
No, I think that, we can always say outside the box.
Metrics, but just number of kids. We have five more kids this year.
And knowing that we have, um, new goals and things coming up this September, I mean, like new, brand-new three to five-year work. Devin, Carrie and Lindsay and I are working on, um, gaining more information based on the work that they've done so, so that we can focus our goals, um, not to be driving that portrait, well, to be driving their work. So that we're not working in two separate fields. So we hope to have, um, something in August, it's our goal, August or September, so that our work, um, adds value to their work.
And I, would you say too, it'll maybe allow some focus?
Yep.
And that, I mean, we don't want ten different things going on.
I appreciate that.
Limit that and maybe narrow the focus to say, this is what we can do.
So what is the timeline then on that?
We were hoping to have something August.
Yeah, we meet next week to, to work out some more details. We've already met once, but, um, we're hoping to have some kind of a presentation available by August, maybe this September, a school board meeting.
That is the goal.
Yep.
Yeah. Because we'd like to, I mean, that's something too, as we get back to school, we want to have that to roll out for, um, staff members too, so it all fits together.
Yeah, so just so I'm clear, you're talking about the annual goals. Because, I mean, it's always best to do that. We, the last two years, we've talked about, oh, we should be doing that late spring, so that we're, right?
Yeah.
Because if we're doing it in September, we're already a month after the school year start.
Yeah, I think we're putting the effort in that this summer to present it, so. I, I mean, we may, it's more late, but.
We're going to do.
There's been good work done since the focus has become Portrait of a Graduate. I think that they've moved forward at a very consistent pace, so we just want to make sure that as we do our work, we come together.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Carrie.
Is that, switch some things up a little bit here?
Yeah, we're going to make some, call an audible, call an audible. I don't know if it was a forceball metaphor. Can we, so we just did the administrative reports. Can we go right down to floor four A on the update on the bike path? Uh, since Tyler has to leave here in a few minutes and he's sort of the, the chief, uh, walking biking trail resident, board member.
So I, I think I can make this short. Uh, I appreciate you checking into the legalities, Lindsay. And first, when John Pop was here, he wasn't coming saying, hey, you're obligated to do this. Hopefully everybody heard he's saying, hey, we entered into this as a collaboration.
Yeah.
The county, the city, the school. What we found out was because at least initially, we didn't have any land adjacent to that bike path, legally we couldn't. And I actually think at this point, I've got a different suggestion for the board that really says, okay, well, let's not even go there. Because the city and the county have made a lot of progress towards the funding of that. And when you go out to that property, which is that direction, I think, pointing in the right direction.
You got it?
Where?
The bike path, where it ends on the north, it now ends right on our district property and it goes down to a very narrow sidewalk, which in a couple of areas is already crumbled because of traffic over that. My suggestion to the board is, okay, let's not be concerned with trying to figure out the legalities of making a donation into the bike path. The city and the county have basically taken the lion's share of all of that. I think we should consider, strongly consider making our path going north out of that consistent with that bike path and taking it all the way to Prairie View, which is that very first street. Because it's a narrow, it's a narrow sidewalk that was put in, uh, when we built the high school because it supposedly had to be put in, even though we knew a bike path was coming. So I would rather that we redirect our energy and our focus into extending that bike path north to Prairie View and then be done, because that, that basically drops off all of that traffic onto, into the city at that point. So I don't know how many of you have been down there to see what, what happens at that juncture, but it basically goes for, I think it's eight foot? Anybody know for sure? Eight foot or more to a four foot. And then our sidewalk is actually broken in a number of places.
So what you're talking about, the area just past this, I'm thinking of as I'm coming into, we're just past the stop sign, you know, where the kids go into the,
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then completing it that, that way.
Yep, yep.
So what is existing there as a narrow sidewalk, turning that into?
And I don't know if that means it could be poured side by side for the good sidewalk or that it all needs to be replaced. But that's, that's my suggestion at this point.
I think that we should probably, yeah, get some, I don't know what it would cost, but we should figure that out and we'll get into it. I think that we probably have some people, even actually in this room, that might have some expertise in that that could maybe help us. I did want to let you know that, uh, one of the things that, when John was here the last time, I, I think administrative Louis tried to say, well, what can we do to help? We want to make sure that we are good neighbors. So what they did was in each of the buildings, uh, they were able to take donations. If I say this wrong, add in to what you need. The, uh, and this, this isn't the whole bike path, but it is at least a step in the right direction. There was one thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars that was donated from the school, uh, for the bike path. So it's, it's one of those deals like Tyler's talking about, every little bit helps here. So it's just, it's just making that difference.
From the staff, not the school.
Yep, from the staff, thank you.
So how far away are they? I know you said they made great progress, but I thought when he came the last time, it was like, what, seven, eight thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, is it? And so are we, have we made progress since then? Or you're just saying they made great progress to get to the fifteen thousand?
They're doing another fundraiser, June thirtieth, a bike ride, which should raise more money, but. I think at this, my point being, at this point, the biggest thing we can do is make that contiguous right up into the city.
So would you like to have us just go ahead and kind of, uh, check into, and again, I don't know whether running side by side is the right way to do it or taking the old one out. Like you said, there's, uh, some construction, uh, there's some traffic that's gone in there, so some of that is already crumbling. But, uh, maybe what we could do is we could come back with some ideas or some actual financial proposals. Is that okay for the board?
Yeah.
That sounds great.
Okay.
All right, um, I'm going to, okay, so we're going to switch a few more things up. We're going to come back to a handful of these still. We're gonna come back to a handful of these still. But Lindsay asked if we could move up, for Travis's sake, the sealed bid opening? So that's 501E and also F, which is the resolution directing the sale. Is that okay to go ahead and move that around? And I promise I'm keeping track and we'll get through everything.
I don't, we, another option is we can let Travis give us his opportunity to speak and I'm not sure if we want to wait until John comes down to vote. That's up to you.
No, it's a great call.
But we can just let Travis talk.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
It's just a question.
That sounds great. Okay, now we're way off. Whatever you need to say, man, let's do it.
So the trade-off, Lindsay moves me out, so I get two minutes, right?
Yeah, that's right, ask me short.
That's how that works? Okay. That's, that's the amount we got. Okay. And honestly, this should be relatively quick in terms of review. For those of you aware, today was the day we were taking the bids for 10 million of the 14 million voter approved bonds. To keep those bonds, we call bank qualified under the small issuer exemption, so sell a portion now and a portion, could be as soon as November, closing in January, but also could be pushed off into the spring, depending on when you actually need the money. And I will point out, this will look slightly different. I found that I sent you guys the wrong one, there was an updated one. All the information's accurate up top, but there's a few omissions at the bottom, so I wrote those in on the ones that got printed. So that's my bad, not Gail's. So today, you had four bids. They came from underwriting firms primarily in the Midwest area. Robert W. Baird of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, was the low proposal. They had an average rate, which is shown as the true interest rate of 3.522%. The other bids came in at 3.57, 3.66 was Hudson Shockey, and then DA Davidson at 3.67. So overall, we looked at some recent sales that occurred in the market. Ames sold debt last week, Winterset Schools sold debt last week. Couple of things on those debt issuance is they have very different structures. So if you're trying to look at average rate between what they actually got as an average rate and what you got as an actual average rate, they're not going to be comparable just because of the way your debt was structured. But what I did do is take all of the bond data that we received from Winterset and plug that into your model. And after adjusting for a slight change in fees, you guys achieved virtually identical results with your average rate. So overall, that tells us that, you know, rate in line with market. You have seen the market, we call it improve, but for you guys, it's not good. So, you know, market has had some little bit of improvement over the last couple of weeks, which typically will, will drive some bond rates up. Still, rates are lower than they were at the end of April, so you should feel good about where rates came in. In terms of the other pages, there's sources and uses of funds, you can see the cost of issuance, underwriting discount, the amount you'll have for school improvement projects out of this 10 million. Your bond debt service schedule, which really doesn't mean a whole lot on the next page, absent seeing the rest of your debt structure. But just to kind of point out, you know, one of the goals here is that, you know, you do have $14 million of debt to sell. The goal here was to try to lock in interest rates and mitigate your interest rate risk by selling. You see from 2034 out to 2038, the bulk of about, you know, $8 million of your debt is sitting out there. So with this, it's all issued with the 14 million and it'll create a level debt service schedule over a 20-year time horizon. The following page then just gives a bond pricing summary, so you can see the yields. Again, not a lot of real interesting data here. Where I'd like to just spend a couple minutes of time is talk through your options with respect to structuring the remaining 4 million. And you're gonna see a bunch of columns, a bunch of numbers, but if you can look at columns five and six, those are the two columns that represent the principal structure on the existing debt, which is now showing, sorry, column two, the debt issued today, column five, and then what is anticipated to be the debt issued in column six as your 2019 bond, so that remaining 4 million. So what you see then, if you, you know, march over to column nine, is what your total principal and interest looks like, and then your levy rate. As it stands right now, based on your very strong valuation growth that you had this last spring, you know, you'll have 405 this year. If rates hold steady, you're looking at 388 as the average levy rate then moving out forward, if you were to structure the debt as is with level payments. Now, if you go all the way to the right, you can see there's an amount that's shown as a surplus levy. So that just represents the amount remaining within the 405. That doesn't mean you can bank those dollars and, you know, spend them on other projects. What you can do is begin using those dollars to pay off your existing debt to allow you to accelerate that timeline on what could be the next building. Option two, then takes that structure and accelerates your payments. And so you see the surplus levy for the first 15 years or 14 years is much lower, so there's not really much surplus. You're rated at the 405, but then you're freeing up bonding capacity on the backside. So this does save some interest costs for the district over time. Conversely, you can go back to option one and then just continue to levy the 405 and take that money and pay off existing debt. So you essentially can get there either way. Just know that before we come with the next bond issue, we'll be looking for some direction on the structure and how you want to set that up. Personally, you know, you might be wowed by the lower interest cost, whatever it might be, and I would just say that likely you're going to end up in a very similar position if you do pay off existing debt. So otherwise, you know, I don't have a lot else to add to this, other than based on where we set rates, your strong valuation growth, it looks like you're not going to be sitting at the brink of your capacity, which is good news for future projects for the district. So happy to see that, you know, rates did come in lower than we probably had built in the fall. So rates had held up pretty good through the spring season, which is, you know, absent, despite the Fed, you know, raising their short-term rates, municipal bond rates have stayed very competitive. So that's why you see some of the variance and lower than 405. So overall, you know, I think the results were great. Glad that we moved forward with, you know, getting this lot in so that you guys can, you know, sleep better at night, not worrying about if rates go up and that impacts your future potential elementary building. So this locks in $10 million of your debt and then you're gonna have some option to structure your next bond issue. So any questions?
Just a confirmation that, that that's with zero valuation growth, both of these models, right?
Yes, correct.
And then the second one is, what, what would be your recommended timing to have the conversation in preparation for the 4 million?
Yeah, I would say probably September of this year or, you know, whatever month around there makes sense, you know? Frankly, the, the next step that I see, and Gail and I talked about this, is trying to get cash flow out of Hala, just to, I mean, do we go forward and sell another 4 million knowing that you may not really be spending any real dollars on your projects until, you know, October, November, December, and big chunks beginning next spring? So there's no impetus to really rush and sell the bonds, other than just mitigating interest rate risk. So you have the option of structuring the debt in order to mitigate that, but it's not something I want necessarily to push you unnecessarily, but we can do a pretty easy analysis to show, well, here's what we do know right now. You have 4 million of remaining authority, you're gonna sell $4 million of debt at some point. So the analysis, or the added cost of selling debt that closes five months earlier, so five months of interest on $4 million. And then, well, what if rates go up a quarter percent on that $4 million? Are you gonna wish that you just sold the debt back in November versus waiting till March and rolling the dice? You guys have the luxury, given how the levy rate structure works out, that you can make either option. You're not, you know, there's no need that you have to wait to avoid paying the extra five months of interest, but you might be able to mitigate some interest rate risk there. So earliest you'd be making that decision in my mind is September.
Yep, and the first indication of valuation, I know the official's in January, but it seems like you had some.
We did get some, Story County does well with getting that out, but it's likely late September, early October, so we're probably not gonna have it. So that, that would kind of pitch me back to preferring option one if you're gonna sell in, in November, where I like option two, especially if you know that next year's valuation and then you can, you know, you might be able to ratchet that up to 405 for 10 years, which really probably accomplishes your goal.
Yep.
And then you can back it down. So that's, that's how we're looking at it. Just wanted to kind of give you our 10,000-foot view of the things that we're thinking about.
And being our financial advisor, if for some reason you see the markets going haywire or that, you will call us up and say, hey, I think you need to consider a different option or something.
Yeah, you, your district and Winterset are both kind of in the same boat. You've sold 10 million, you don't have pieces left out, so we're just gonna monitor that right now and be ready to kind of give you some hard, fast numbers. Might start talking to you in August and then determine if it's a September or October for me, but it should be relatively clean process, quick. You know, we'll have just done the official statement, new diligence stuff and rating and we'll just get ready to do it again.
Can I ask any question? Why not, I mean, historically, our taxable valuation has gone up. Why not put that in this model?
We can. We, we do have to prove on the day we sell the bonds to your attorney that you can have the authority to issue that based on current valuation. So the August, September exercise will bring that into fruition. The structuring piece will be that, and essentially we'll be, we'll likely do that, is lock down columns one through 11 on current valuation, allow 12 to 14 to give you a reflection of what growth looks like in pre-pay. So we'll, we'll certainly do that. Today, fortunately, we have to be locked in on current valuation, but yeah, we can give you that data. We can give it in the interim too, if you want it.
Yeah, and typically, we've asked for a couple of different scenarios. District average is almost 7%. Travis, very reluctant to go there, but.
Half of that, of course. Don't be too well done.
But we'll get some different scenarios.
Yeah, we'll give a 9% scenario.
There we go. Man, you gonna wear shorts when you deliver that or?
Yeah, I think so. Or sandals.
Yep, perfect.
So we're gonna be kept talking again in September, October, and making the decision, possibly if the board wants to, as far as which way to go here?
Yep, depends on the timing on the debt. So you guys, you guys still, well, there's a show meeting once a month, so if we do look at trying to get something in, it'll likely, we'll probably try to get a special meeting in just so that we can kind of accommodate the quick movement as opposed to dragging it out to meetings. Now, that being said, that's a busy time of year for people, so we understand. But just know that we may, we may have a request there on that. I do appreciate you accommodating this, so I could attend my daughter's dance recital last night. So the unfortunate part was I went to the dance recital and that was moved, but then I had to drive to New Hampton last night to, for a 9:00 AM meeting. So I got to New Hampton a little late.
Oh, boy.
It didn't really work out as planned, but at least I was at the recital. I appreciate your flexibility and everything there.
That matters.
So then, later in your agenda, you have a resolution. The way we take it, we usually take, all those rights in is two steps, so you have a motion to consider the bids and then a motion, a resolution direct sale, all the data in there, Gail has. And then Gail, if you just shook any amount based on award times, but we would stand behind the recommendation, we accept a little bit when that action comes up.
And you gonna send me?
Already did.
You already did?
Awesome, yeah.
That's what I was doing over here, trying to get my computer to charge and.
Get some sleep, man, wow.
Just all of the, now I get to go to baseball practice right?
Excellent, thank you, Travis.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move, make one more move real quick and we're gonna go right to the Hala Architecture Construction Update. Tyler has to run, he wants to say, he said one sentence. Let's see if he does it.
I appreciate all the collaboration with the project teams and I hope the back row does too. I think that's been really important as we go forward. That's my statement. I have one question. Instead of questions.
I know.
Make sure that you're clear, or if you can clarify it in one sentence back, the timing for when we think this first round of bids will go out and come back, because then that'll be an important little window for the board to be ready to make some decisions.
Excellent. Down sentences, but there's still one, there's gotta be one. Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks.
All right, it's up to you, man. Go try to work one day. You're all over the place tonight. John's gonna get back here and try to run this meeting, he's like, ugh, loves this junior dude who charges.
Yeah, like, what's happened?
All right. Let me change. All right, well, thank you for having us tonight to give you a little update on the schematic design. I will echo Tyler's sentiments that the, I'm not sure if I've ever worked with a district that has this many stakeholders, this interested.
You have to say more positive, but yes.
Yeah, it's awesome. Like, sometimes we get districts that, they just say, we just want a classroom and a box, we don't care what it looks like, just, just get it done. And that is not the case with this district at all. We have a lot of really passionate people involved and that, that's been really fun. It makes, it makes my job fun, so I really appreciate it. So again, some guiding principles that we've been working with, you know, good communication, strong team orientation, perceive with a problem-solving approach and continue to make Gilbert unique. So kind of every, every meeting, we come back to these tenants, try to hit on that. As you might recall, at our kickoff meeting last month, we really kind of broke these projects into four different groups. There's the intermediate school and elementary school renovations, which are already under construction underway. Then the lion's share of the work is in the middle school, high school additions and renovations, as well as middle school and high school athletics, which we're calling site improvements. That's kind of another grouping. We also have our elementary school and intermediate school MEP improvements and also our track repairs project. So those kind of four different project groupings. We're gonna concentrate mostly tonight on this, this one here. That's where we've done a lot of the work for the last month. So outside of the, the project leads of Vic Vanderpool, Mike Danelson, and Tim Pozetti, we also have a number of other stakeholders. I think we have, we've met with 32 unique individuals over the last month. We had six meetings with these different groups and a follow-up meeting with the VOTech addition. We'll likely have another follow-up meeting with the baseball and softball group as well coming up. But really great discussion across all of them and a lot of really good input. You know, for us, it's that, it's kind of just the information gathering stage, you know, just, just, just pour it on for us and we'll go from there. So the deliverable that, you probably got the electronic version last, sometime last week, is the schematic design book, which is about, it's a 144-page document or so that attempts to kind of encapsulate the scope of all of this project. And it's broken into an executive summary, everything happening at the middle school, everything happening at the high school, and then our athletic improvements. There's also some kind of general mechanical electrical plumbing narratives at the end. So schedule and milestones, as Tyler alluded to, kind of looking forward, our first, our first bid that we're looking to have would be in September 11th. Let's see, right here. Yep, September 11th. We would plan to be done with drawings and specs and issue those by August 16th. That's for the middle school, high school. We'll likely bid the, the track repairs as well sometime before then, but in the grand scheme of things, that's, that's a very small project in the grand scheme of things, so. And, and that one is up in the air a little bit too. We can discuss that later too, on what, what the recommended approach is for that, those track repairs. But ultimately, we're pushing hard for that September 11th bid date so we can start moving dirt and starting to get major structural elements and the. dirt and starting to get major structural elements and the, and the building exteriors procured and underway so that we could open up for class in, in all of our additions and renovations in, for first semester 2019. There is kind of a secondary date of when the athletic fields would be turned over to you in October. And that gets you two growing seasons before the baseball starts.
All right, can I ask you a question? I don't mean to stop your flow as far as the overall process here, but on that one on September 11th, how wide of a spectrum are we gonna bid there? The reason I'm asking is because we have another, like those project leads that are sitting right behind you, will there be another meeting that they will have to have?
Yes.
And so will, will that have to happen like instantaneously so that that can be part of the bid process or will that be the next bidding process that those will be?
That'll be part of the next bidding process.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
So our, our charge this summer is to really push hard for these exterior elements. So we've got, we call it building exterior core and shell as well as site utilities. That's what we'll be designing this summer for that September bid. This fall, we'll start on the interior side of, of things as well as some of the landscaping too for the site elements. So we'll have a lot more input from teachers and patrons at that time for finishes and specific equipment and kind of everything that goes inside the building, making those selections at that time. So, so yeah, we'll have two different bidding, bidding periods, one in September, September 11th, and the second one, we're pushing for Jan, late, late January. I can't remember the specific date, January 28th or 31st?
29th.
29th, okay.
Have to bid on the 5th and bid on the 29th is what we gotta determine.
In terms of our three, three-month look ahead, we have our, our board meeting here tonight. We will have what's called a design development set. That will be due about a month from now, July 7th. And then the final design will be complete with details, detailed drawing, specs, alphabet August 16th. And there'll be kind of some budgets provided by Story Construction along the way to check are we, are we kind of staying in our lane for, for budget cost? Do you have a question?
Yeah, that's my face. So I just am trying to picture this to make sure I'm getting it right. So I, for example, the middle school, we had a meeting not long ago and we talked about kind of a little bit of everything, some interior stuff like middle work, things like that.
Yes.
And so I think I thought that was solidifying that. But I think, am I, maybe I misunderstood because really what you're talking about is you wanted to make sure that the exterior, like we, we still were working within the exterior bounds or something. Will we have another chance to swipe through that? Make additional recommendations, additional ideas for the interior space?
Yes.
You're saying we'll come in January?
The additional input for interiors will be in this fall. Yep.
Okay. I think I misunderstood. I thought that we were trying to jam it all into one.
What these last meetings were schematic design, they're fairly high level.
Yeah.
Just kind of getting our arms around the scope. Design development, that's the next phase that we're moving into now is design refinement where you're, you're selecting very specific pieces of equipment or materials. We're gonna focus over these next few months of the summer of doing that design development just for the exteriors and the site elements. This fall, we'll jump back into design development for the interiors where we're making very specific selections for the interiors of the project.
And some of those specific are, you want carpet A or carpet B or paint color A or paint color B?
Yep. That's type of ceiling, that type of ceiling.
Very detailed decision.
Yep.
But also things like furniture or some middle work stuff too, right?
Yes.
As long as this is what we're talking about with the exterior.
Yep, exactly.
But now if we were talking about, just, if we were talking about things like, wow, we needed additional wiring or something, that's something that you would have expected to be in this first round? Or not? The electric, you know what I'm saying? Like we need more, is that interior or ex? Like infrastructure?
Yep. Most of the, the underground infrastructure will be included in this first bid package. We'll need to talk more with Story Construction about what, what they recommend for it. But we'll have some, we'll have some infrastructure also. I'm thinking about electrical conduit in masonry walls. You know, for example, it'd be something that will likely be bid in this first period. But the second bid period will also have a lot of infrastructure as well. Duct work will likely come in at that time. Light fixtures of those, and the conduit run to those light fixtures, that type of stuff. So there's.
And options for technology at the same time?
Yep, that, that would be.
Do those things get solidified or is that in the second round?
That'd be second round.
Okay.
Yep, yeah. So there's, there's time to, to make those decisions later. And it's good for the timing of, it's summer, a lot of people are gone. To try to make those decisions now would be, be rather difficult. So it's good that we're kind of pushing some of those decisions off until the fall when everybody returns. So, so yeah, that's our three-month look ahead to, to get to that bid date on September 11th. And then all of you would take action on those bids on the 18th. Okay. Project budget. So this, this budget is basically what was prepared in your master plan and included in the, included in the bond referendum with the update of, of the renovations project that's, that's been bid, kind of added back into the spreadsheet. This project that we're talking about here, at the end of the day, it's a, it's a $10.9 million project, including design fees, construction contingencies, FFNE, that's kind of the whole package there. That's, that's the budget. We also have some kind of line item budgets for different components of those projects. We'll be working with Story.
I'm sorry, I feel like a cat watching my pointer go over.
Sorry. Are you chasing it around?
Yes, sir. It's a cool pointer, but I keep wanting to look.
So, so this is, this is our, our budget. It's, it's not the cost estimate. Story Construction, their team is working hard on the schematic design cost estimate to see if it aligns with our budget and if, if all the different sub-projects are kind of staying in their lane. And we have a meeting, or that, that's Friday is when that, that'll be done. We'll have a meeting sometime next week to go over that between Hala and Story Construction. And we'll give an, give an update on that, so. Any questions regarding to the project budget?
I just have one question. As a board leading into this entire bond referendum, we had prioritized and itemized things, which we've kind of like lost in here. I just want to make sure that as a board, we're continuing, well, as a team of people working on this, that we still are keeping that priority in mind. For example, I'm gonna be very straight about this. We put the bas, the baseball and softball stadium facility low. It was the lowest one we voted on. Thought we had the other ones above it. I just want to make sure that as we look at expenses and all that stuff, that we're still keeping that in mind, like, and we wrote the bond language such that, again, if we can't build these things like we think they can, costs go over, that that is going to, some, you know, we have a prioritization here and we have loose enough bond language that allowed us to continue to keep that priority. I just don't want us to forget about it. I'm hoping we can build all this stuff, but I don't want to forget about, as a board, we did agree on a kind of a priority of things that had to get done.
And along with that same train of thought, as I look through these, it, it seems to me that things like FFNE and, and, you know, maybe some opportunities for innovative collaborative spaces and things. I'm a little worried that, that the budget line items for some of those things are pretty tight, if, if not maybe unrealistic. And I don't think that we want to go into this and come out with something that's status quo and then three years down the road have to upgrade and spend more money. So I just want to second his sentiments that as, as we're talking through these things, you know, do you feel that the money's been put in place to be innovative and to, to, you know, I guess that's the back row, things like FFNE? Can we be creative? Can we, can we really truly provide 21st century learning with what we're doing? Because we can build the space, but if we can't put stuff in the space, why are we building space, you know?
All I can say is that this is, this represents the, the budget that was crafted after a lot of discussions within, during the master planning process. And the FFNE kind of allowance items that are included there are based on the conversations John Hala had with those user groups at the time. If those need to increase to provide that 21st century learning, then, then absolutely that's, that's your prerogative as a board to set that as a priority. It might mean that we need to drop something off of the priority list or dial back the quality of the, the built work, some, you know, all in an effort to try to balance the, the budget and make sure that we don't go over.
If I could just chime in real quick, one thing that I think through the process, like Stacy, I don't want to speak for Stacy, but one of the things we've talked about that we have gone through the process with Hala most recently, and the recommendation we've kept telling, keep telling Mike and Vic, is that there's been a lot of, I think, miscommunication because we've, we started with John, Hala, and then we went with Sam, or then a lot of our conversation went to Sam and then to you. And so there's been a lot of, ooh, well, I heard from John or what I told John, did it get communicated down the line? And so I don't, I would just be careful of assumptions of what, what was maybe started three years ago is truly what the conversations and understanding that each of us had. Because I think we found in our two projects that that hasn't been the case. And there's some increase of things that are happening as a result of that.
I, I also think that there was, in that master planning process, there was a lot of effort put towards making sure that all buildings were represented and that a lot of user groups, which means that not everything captured in the master planning process could make it into the final budget. That we have, yes, we have $10.9 million worth of projects here. That doesn't mean that we have, you know, a blank check, that we, we have a very strict budget to, to adhere to.
And I think just moving forward, you know, obviously we completely understand a budget and you have, you know, you only have so much money. But I do think one thing that would be very helpful moving forward is a, a pretty detailed list of what's included in each bid package because I think that's, and maybe even highlights of things that aren't included. I think that's where Amy's and mine have probably fallen a little bit is we, we had a list, we didn't, you know, things that we would assume, and we're going to speak to some of those I think a little bit later, would have been included or not. And so I think that's probably important, especially as the projects get larger and larger.
So this is our budget. And by Friday, we'll know if, if we're, we're staying in our lanes or not. And in design development, that's our opportunity to, to do really a deep dive, we call them page turns, with our, our different page turn user groups where we go over literally every page of the, of the, of the drawing package and make sure that everybody understands what is included in the project and what's not included in the project. So, so yeah, we'll have that coming up here and for exterior work in, in June, in kind of middle, late June, we'll have that. And then again, we'll do that. It'll be a big one for the interiors in September, October, right? To, to make sure everybody's on the same page of what's included and what's not.
So when you guys meet with Adam and, and Story, is this meeting to go over to look at the details of that, that budget? Or is it the details to look over, hey, did we miss anything on the overall design of it? What, if, and just a short, not, not anything big, just in a short few sentences, what would be the objective of that meeting when you guys come together?
So I'll just say, I think it covers both things. So one, we're confirming that we have priced appropriately what Hala intended for us to price. So we want to make sure that our vision and their vision are lining up, how we see it, how they wanted us to see it. First. Second, maybe if there are overages here or there, we talk through those to understand how we can take care of it to level the playing field, we'll say. I guess the third is just confirming scope and I'll say creating a document that confirms scope for whoever wants to see that A, B, and C are included, X, Y, and Z are not included. That's, I don't know if you have anything else, Art, but ultimately, we just want to collaborate between the two teams to make sure that we're pricing what they thought we were gonna price and what we should be pricing.
Thank you. That's, that wasn't meant to be a trick question, but you hit some of the things that you're in the back table talking about.
Yep.
So that, that'd be great.
Are you also, as you're going through these design things and not yet looked through some of this stuff, but you're capturing the, listen, this is a must-have. This is a, I mean, we're differentiating so we know those items as we go into for those packages, whatever you say. If there's room, let's try this, but if not, we're capturing the difference.
Yep, we'll get into it a little bit when we talk about the different projects, about some potential alternates of the, things that'd be nice to have if we, if we do have in the budget, so.
So after your meeting on Friday, do you come back to the district on giving us an update or what does that look like?
Correct. So sometime that following week we'll off this up, I assume a special meeting or if it's, we meet with, with Lindsay and Tyler first and then the rest of the board after that or?
Yeah.
I think that's kind of how we set it up before, that we would meet with the leadership team first.
See if there's a need for a special meeting.
I just want to make sure that, that if we do need to meet, that you, I want to make sure that all these people here are informed about what we're, what we're doing. I want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
So we'll be interested if that's scheduled with you.
Thank you. Brian, back to your point about prioritization too, that these projects really, how we're, how we're approaching them and how we've bundled the projects together, they, they've been, it's been formerly based on what makes sense for design and construction, not necessarily So, but I, I think that if, if we get our, our cost estimate back from Story and we realize there's overages, we should go back, revert back to that prioritization of how to make decisions going forward. Do we need to cut this from the project or do we need to accept a lesser quality for this component because we need to save the quality for this higher priority item? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes total sense.
I think that's what I was trying to look at when you had the minds, you know, just to make sure, was there a time before we started that next one? Did we know really the true cost of some of those higher priority ones? That's, I think I just wanted to make sure, sounds like that, that's there.
Yep.
We need to be very diligent about that and keep aligning ourselves.
Yep. Okay. Projects overview. We'll start at the middle school. Actually, for all of these projects, just in the interest of time, I'm, I'm only gonna hit on things that may be deviated from what you saw last fall. Some design refinement that came out of the discussions we've had over the last month. So middle school additions and renovations, our multipurpose room addition, vestibule as well as the locker room renovations, very similar to what was created last fall. The only addition is this, this little piece right down here. This is what's currently the fitness room at the, at the middle school. We kind of realized in design that there's a storage room back here that has a lot of the football and volleyball storage that, you know, right now they either issue equipment into the large wrestling room or they bring it out to the gym, very easily go through the wrestling room and through the fitness room. But now if we put all this stuff in the way and, and to get to that storage room, you would have to. would have to go through the locker rooms, and it would be rather difficult to issue equipment. And there's a need for additional storage space. Also, a desire for a unisex or gender-neutral changing room and possibly shower toilet room, which we included here. Let's see if I've got, blow up. So what happened was, we took that fitness room and we moved it to the multipurpose room. There's enough room in that space to have both our wrestling mats when they're down, as well as the weight equipment. And when the wrestling mats are up, it becomes a very large fitness room for multipurpose use. That fitness room area, that existing fitness room area, we'd have storage in the back of equal size to the current space. And then, this is the changing room that we would propose to have an alternate to add in the plumbing elements for that, so the shower and the toilet sink, lavatory. There's a sanitary sewer line that runs directly underneath here, so it would involve tearing up concrete, tapping into that sanitary sewer, bringing in plumbing from the top. That, adding the storage addition, or the additional storage here, that doesn't concern me a whole lot, that's pretty cheap space. Plumbing was definitely not included in that original master plan back in last fall, and can get very expensive. So that's why we recommend pursuing that, adding those plumbing elements as an alternate. So, that's kind of the additional scope or change in scope associated with this project. Any questions with that?
So that was always going to be a changing room, but now we're suggesting the alternate would be to make it like a unisex restroom and shower? Is that what you're saying?
Really, there was nothing involved with this rectangle of space. So all of this is new, but to do a changing room and a storage room, that's fairly cheap space, you know, could be absorbed by some contingency. But, yeah, adding that plumbing in, that does concern me with cost, but everything else was included, so.
And the plumbing in there. So, that room came to be, Mike, as my crews, we talked about this, there are currently two rooms that serve as offices for the PE teacher, but also as coaches' rooms, and they're fairly small. And so, like, for example, in the football season, there are four, two coaches, male coaches, for seventh grade, two from eighth grade, they're all in this space in addition to Mike that's in there. So, we talked about having a separate space where those coaches could go. Officials in basketball, Tim felt like they don't have a space currently to change, so they change in Stacy's, Stacy Skinsix's office area. So, the plumbing was something we talked about was a nice to have. Art drew it up without plumbing. It was something where we even talked about possibly just stubbing it out so we could add it down the road while the work was being done, if we felt like we needed a shower facility for officials and for coaches. So that's where that room came to be. It was something that we hadn't anticipated. And the storage was, as we were looking at it, there really is no access to get that storage unless you went outside and used the outside way to access athletic storage. And so, that athletic storage, we felt like needed to be moved, and now was the time as opposed to trying to figure out where.
What, do you have any plans of what you would use that old storage room for?
It would still be athletic storage. So currently, like, baseball and softball is stored outside, and so, as my crews would tell you, if you were here, and probably Tim, that they get a lot of, there's some lollons, some uniforms that they have to get rid of every year because it's stored outside, it's not climate controlled. So, we actually have insufficient athletic storage currently. Like, our middle school volleyball nets are stored in an access hallway to get to the roof, because we don't have a place for them to be. So we have to pull them out every time we need to get to, up to the air conditioners, because we don't have a spot for them. And so this will help remedy a lot of that, so.
The classroom addition and the renovations to some of these activity zones is nearly identical to what we had last fall. There's only some very minor changes with some copy room, the copiers that are kind of at the end of the hallway, need to find a home, and so we added a little closet essentially to put the copiers in. But virtually identical, had great discussion around these. I think we reconfigured some of the work, but that was about it. It was pretty straightforward.
Are those desks in the middle or toilets in those classrooms?
Those are it's, those are about toilets.
Oh, yeah, desks, yeah. The teacher desk location.
Yeah, that's great.
The teacher desk, yeah.
21st century, yeah.
I don't know, man. It's a new thing.
Where did the collaboration spaces from?
That's what activities is?
Oh, activities is that? Okay, I was looking.
Open or walls?
They're open. We're going to do some things with carpet and lower ceilings and some maybe half-high partition walls to make it a more intimate space and help control sound and make those better breakout spaces, make them feel less like a corridor and more like a space for learning, so. This isn't a change or a deviation, this is just a first look at. We'd always kind of talked about with this new multipurpose addition, that there's likely going to be some parking lot reconfiguration, and that was budgeted in the bond referendum. But there was never any kind of discussion of what that would look like. So here's the kind of first blush of what that new parking configuration would be. We're adding a number of stalls out to the west and creating a roundabout drop-off area here. And then, instead of having the ADA stalls kind of out here and here, they would be up against kind of head-in parking here, new sidewalks all the way around to there, so.
One of the things that we get feedback on frequently is the distance of, like, for basketball games, the distance of handicap parking or parking seniors to get to the front doors. Now, having the investment will help with that, that will move closer for the parking, but we felt like moving that parking along the curb there, the handicap accessible, would definitely help with some of the feedback we get every basketball season.
Okay, so, probably the largest deviation from the master plan is, resides in the VOTEC, as well as the classroom and art room additions, that at the kickoff meeting, at the kickoff meeting last month, even the art teachers and Vic, they came up to me and Sam, and they said, you know, guys, we're kind of concerned with the layout that was prepared, you know, last fall, you know, can we look at some different options? So they gave us some feedback at that meeting. We came to the, to the, that first kickoff meeting with you guys with some ideas of how to improve it. So, last fall, the idea was to do a VOTEC expansion to the north of the existing VOTEC space. North of that would be our career tech addition, kind of around the corner, on first floor, we'd have our art classroom. On second floor, we'll have our two general classrooms. And what that would involve would be the inclusion of this long corridor on the west side of those additions. It would include moving or demolition and build new egress stairs, and it would involve covering up the daylight on the second level space of this classroom, so we'd want to retrofit that classroom with a skylight. This classroom is buried and would need a skylight. And the art classroom is completely buried with little to no access for natural daylight. So there's a lot of things that were going against this design that weren't very conducive to what they're trying to achieve. And so, we listened and came up with an alternative scheme that really sought to achieve their vision without increasing square footage and trying to keep costs, you know, similar to what was budgeted originally. So this was the sketch that we came with to the meeting and talked about. Essentially, what we did was we slid the art room and the classroom portion of that addition down. It was kind of in this area, and we rotated it down and around. To start, the first step in the future expansion, the high school building was always kind of planned to create a loop or a courtyard kind of plan of that, of that high school. And so this addition, this two-story addition, would be that first step towards that courtyard, courtyard plan. Then, instead of having the career tech north of VOTEC, kind of increasingly north, we wrapped it around the corner here so that it could connect in with the existing corridor. So there are some increased costs with this. We're more spread out, there's additional perimeter wall area, so there's, you know, longer stretches of footings, structural footings, as well as more exterior wall And because we're more spread out, there's, the structural efficiency isn't as great as having a nice compact plan like we had previously. But, this also reduces some cost. We don't have to do skylights anymore. This classroom on the second floor of the high school, it could still retain its window looking out. There's a lower roof here before it gets to the upper portion of the career tech. So no need for a classroom skylight retrofit there. We'd have natural daylight for these two classrooms with standard windows, as well as this art classroom, bringing in lots of north light, that's the best kind of light you can get for an art classroom. And then, not reconfiguring the stair. You know, it's one thing to kind of talk abstractly about, you know, we'll just demolish that stair or move it, and then you get out there and you look at it, and you're like, that stair is four years old, it's still really beautiful, why would you want to move that or demolish it? And it'd be quite expensive to undertake to do that. So, tentatively, in doing some brief cost analysis, our office thinks that this is about a wash in terms of cost, but it really achieves the vision of the high school art and those general classroom much better, in a much better way than what the previous plan did. So, we felt good about proceeding with this as a plan to ultimately come up with. So this is the first level with the art classroom, corridor leading out, there'll be some this direction. On the second level, there's a corridor that dead-ends into a, this is a small groupout activity space, our two classrooms. Yeah, and the feedback after, that was probably the most positive feedback we got, kind of after the fact, was from the art teachers. They were very appreciative of the moves that we had made here. The second piece that changed really drastically from last fall was the career tech center. So, in the master plan, a lot of the discussion for that career tech space revolved around, or was focused around, an ag space. And there's notes about big, open shell space, blank box, flexible, nothing in it, with envisioning, you know, having farrowing, like animal farrowing in here for a couple weeks at a time, but mostly just a big, open box. Since then, Vic and the VOTEC and FCS and art and ag have come up with a really compelling vision for what that space could be. And Vic, feel free to jump in and correct me, essentially, it's a, the vision would be to create a fantastic kind of project-based learning center. And in our kickoff meeting, we, it was kind of this farm-to-table and everything in between, you know, the ag program would grow food and process it here, process meats, and have a small commercial kitchen to prepare food, and there's a food truck to stock with that food and take it out to fall games, and it was awesome. The energy was electric in the room, it was a great brainstorming session, and I felt just awful raising my hand and saying, guys, I hate to be the guy that throws a bucket of cold water on here, but, but last fall, when this was all budgeted, that we were a step above a barn, and now we have a very specialized and honestly very expensive programmatic space, you know, the dollar signs were just ringing in my head when we were talking about commercial kitchens. So, Vic and Lindsay and Tyler and the rest of that group met again internally and had another meeting to kind of focus the vision for that space. And maybe, Vic, it'd be probably best for, since we weren't present at that kind of focusing, maybe you could update us on it.
Sure, sure. Well, the discussion from industrial kitchen, that's when the dollar signs started really ringing up, very expensive equipment, very expensive hookups to be able to do all those things. Two more of a food lab, where you could make it, it's not really an industrial kitchen, where you could do food science and you could do a combination of all of the CTE groupings together and use that space. So, kind of more from an industrial kitchen to a food lab, where food can be prepared and processed and used versus the more industrial style, with the goal of, let us give us the hookups and we'll, over time, find the equipment and things to put into the space. But the goal was, it's moving, it just did not make sense, the more we sat and thought about it, is creating this specialized space that not all CTE department can use, it just didn't seem, didn't seem like it was in the spirit of project-based learning, and it didn't seem like it was in the spirit of collaboration as a CTE department. And so we were looking at ways to try to create that space that could be accessible to all the CTE people, and really be something innovative and different that the district has never done, and other districts just aren't doing, so it was that.
Yeah, that's really good.
Which is the food lab, is what you were saying? That's that thing?
Food lab portion of that, yes, yes. The problem becomes, when there's a potential space where animals could be, food can't be in that same space without walls and without doors and without windows, and so then it became a more expensive space than what was originally designed. Now, hindsight being 50/50, had we thought of that a year ago, we would now have proposed a box. You know, we never would have been that direction, but we just thought, the more and more we thought about the space, it just doesn't seem right to design it for just one thing. You know, let's think forward, let's think ahead, where we could go with it and how we could make that work, using all of those CTE areas toward a big project that could be more project-based.
So, I think you guys had that meeting last Tuesday or Wednesday. We followed up pretty quickly with you after that, and Hala was charged with, okay, look at this food lab from a code standpoint, what is going to be required from an infrastructure standpoint? We have a meeting set up tomorrow with the building code officials to talk about the whole high school complex from a building safety standpoint, but that will be probably the biggest topic of discussion is that space. We did kind of have a windshield tour with them last week, and I would, I would like to say that our idea of doing a food lab means that we would have more leniency with the building code officials, but they definitely were not, I was not getting that sense from them that they're going to be lenient, because they're more concerned with, they're less concerned about with what you intend to use it for and more of what you could use it for. So if you have a commercial-grade oven and range, even if you only intend to use it a couple times a year and it's not really for general public consumption, you could use it for that. So that, you know, the health code official will be concerned about cleanliness, and the fire marshal is going to be concerned about, do you have an adequate hood with fire suppression and all that? And the health code official will be concerned about grease, is grease entering into the sanitary sewer system? So, we'll talk more about with them tomorrow and see what, see what comes of that. But I'm not optimistic that, by simply saying we intend to use it as a food lab and that's different than a commercial kitchen, that they'll be lenient from a code standpoint. So, but we'll keep, we'll keep you updated.
There is some leniency when it comes to family consumer science classes.
Yes.
So we were hoping that as a food lab, an extension of family consumer science, there might be some logo room with some of the bigger ticket items that...
And it has to do, all to do with equipment, it's equipment-driven. So if your equipment puts off a certain number of BTUs, then that triggers the hood requirements. requirements. Or, if you have a piece of kitchen equipment that is intended for cooking items with animal fats, that triggers the grease interceptor, which then triggers floor sinks and all. It's kind of a Pandora's Box of items. So, that's, it's all equipment-driven. So, what you, what kinds of equipment you intend to put in there? Long story short, Hala and Story and the rest of our consultants, we've still been kind of directed to keep charging forward with our box, our shell space, very flexible, open, and not specialized. But, maybe we can think about ways that we can plan ahead for the future. Not going so far as to stub in plumbing outlets, because we don't know what that design would be, but thinking about maybe a potential future layout, where we want to lay outdoors and things like that. So, that's, that's been our charge from the group, and Tyler, Lindsay.
From which group?
From Vic's group, and Lindsay and Tyler were involved in those discussions as well.
So, I'm just curious about something, because whenever I hear people say, "We're going to start to do something new that other schools aren't doing," I start to think about corporations, or universities, or something that have an interest, or that there's some, sometimes available money grants available to do things. Do you have, do we have intentions to explore other funding?
The goal was to get things in place and then find the funding, because it's out there. I mean, there's money to be had.
Yeah.
Problem is, our timeline's so short.
Yeah.
That, I don't know if we could secure all that funding before the timeline is due for set plans. I know that if we had a space, and it was designed with future plans, and we had it all built, because it's, you know, it's easier to build now than it is to go back and try to run it later, I know that we could find the funding to get this equipment we need to make it run. I just, we're talking over the course of the summer.
Yeah. It's just, you know, you just told us how expensive it is going to be to bust up the floor and get plumbing in that, in that neutral gender showered toilet area. You know, I think it's, I think it's important that the board and the lead group be presented with the options. And not that I would ever want to just randomly say, "There are other funds," but sometimes there are other funds. And, you know, if we're talking a difference of $5,000 in the grand scheme of things, if we're talking the difference of $50,000, again...
We were spitballing some numbers. If we were to go like a commercial kitchen, you know, that there, it was kind of originally kicked around, maybe 1,000 square feet, we're talking probably in the neighborhood of 300 to 400,000.
For infrastructure?
Infrastructure, equipment, finishes.
Majority of that being eaten up and equipped, not infrastructure.
Right, that was my thought.
Yeah, so, hood, for example, we start the conversation about 50 or 60 grand, 40, 50, 60 grand, depending on size. Some pieces of kitchen equipment are $30,000. So, that's, we just bid a kitchen in January for Avoca Schools down in southwest Iowa, and it was a 1,200-square-foot kitchen, all-new kitchen equipment. And the kitchen equipment alone was between 200 and 250,000 for commercial kitchen. So, that's, that's the magnitude of scale there.
When I was talking about present us with options, I meant infrastructure cost.
Yeah.
Well, because you're not breaking, and if I'm understanding right, you're not breaking up the floor initially, for putting, that's a new piece.
Right, right.
And so, later, the cost would be to put it in into the food lab, then you would have to break up.
It just, we've always built with intention to be burstable, right, or expandable. So, we did the middle school, that's why, you know, I mean, all the infrastructure's there. So, I think it's important, as you're costing things out, that we're presented with two options, and the infrastructure cost.
There's a bit of a chicken-and-egg question there. It's hard to know, to throw out a price for infrastructure if we don't know the end plan and design, you know, specifically what pieces of kitchen equipment are going in here.
Well, it certainly wouldn't hurt to plan it, knowing that we're not buying the equipment.
This is where this would go.
Simplifying this.
Yeah, I feel like we're spending a long time talking about this.
Well, I know. I just, I just don't want us to flush a dream, because we don't want to put a plug in a such place.
So, it's a joke.
Right?
Yeah. No, I mean, it seems like you guys can, you two can sit down, and the stakeholders can sit down and figure out, like, "Hey, this is the dream kitchen, cool, infrastructure costs will be X." Well, that's too much, can't do it.
Right.
You need to know that. I mean, we're not deciding that tonight.
Right.
The right people aren't in the room to decide it. I think it's really good to have all this context, though, for sure, to understand how this all fits, but I don't know how much more time we need to spend on that kitchen.
Right. And I think everybody knows, when you're talking, there are people out there that love this kind of stuff, that will donate to this kind of stuff, that want to see partnerships developed, that want to see innovative and different things. It's just, locking that up in a month, it is a challenge.
I'll sponsor a microwave.
But, having the space, yeah, you don't need a microwave.
Yeah.
But, having the space, knowing that we can develop those partnerships over time, and fill the space, that takes a little bit of the pressure off of us to develop it now. But, yet, I understand what I'm just saying, is that they're charged also with a portion of making sure it's reasonable. Like, we talked about with the art room, how close, I mean, it's, you know, close to a wash. How much are we talking, are we talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, or are we talking thousands of dollars? If it's manageable, you know, having that's for the board to decide, not for the union person to decide.
I mean, I think you've heard the board say, like, "We want to support fun, interesting, you know, non-traditional classroom experiences," over and over. So, I think we'd love to hear those options, for sure.
We've discussed, you know, maybe to the point of, you know, we used to use kitchens, like at the middle school, as our hub. There's equipment probably sitting over there that's not being used, and has not been used since they moved the hub to the high school. You know, there's a hood over there, there's ovens over there, there's stoves over there that don't get used, because they're now no longer the hub. So, there could be things that we already own, or could easily get, and fill that space over time. It's just, the infrastructure, other than a box, is an added cost.
Right.
Any other questions related to that?
What about the fine arts?
Fine arts, yep. So, fine arts is nearly identical. We refined the design, we added, so the instrument storage room, it's got a splayed wall now. It was a 90-degree wall, now it's got a subtle angle to it, and that's for acoustics. We identified different acoustic wall panel, kind of layouts and configurations. The only change, or potential change there, would be in theatrical storage. This room currently is band storage, you access it from right here. It's band storage here, and then I think there's an ensemble room maybe here. And it's a very high space, high-volume space. And so, there's an opportunity to add a mezzanine to that level, to capture, you know, just a little bit more space, about 50% more storage space for theatrical storage. That was never kind of budgeted, it wasn't, we didn't have a line item for extra mezzanine square footage, there's extra cost there. So, this is another bid alternate. You know, if we come in and bids are favorable, we add this piece in, so.
Art, can you back up? Where's that generator set, from your plan?
So, we do need to relocate the emergency generator, that's right here on this corner, mainly from just a constructability standpoint of being able to get in here and build our footings and our walls here for the, so, I don't think there's a final location picked for that, but yeah.
Not a big deal, okay.
Do we have to go through huge hoops with the...
Oh, once she's talked about, we went through FEMA.
I don't, I wouldn't anticipate.
Relocate the generator, or provide additional storage?
No, I just, I mean, like, everything, everything we did with the emergency area, it was like...
A deal?
A deal. Wait, wait, yeah, yeah, a deal. But, do we know that we can relocate it without FEMA involvement? That was a nice word.
To my knowledge, yes, you can relocate it without involvement, but we'll have to ask the authorities.
We'll look into it, but I would anticipate that, you know, pushing it out a little bit further, adding some additional conduit. We will have to look at the cost of some of these things, of, you know, repulling wire and things like that, of what's the most cost-effective way to move that. It's really unfortunate that it got placed where it did. Because there, this was a planned expansion area, zone, so, you know, this placement here is kind of unfortunate.
It's just too tight to your building?
Yeah, yeah, and it depends on...
Just can't be careful of what's in there.
Yeah, the biggest thing, I think, is where do the conduits go that bring the wires into the building?
Yeah. Do they come this way?
If it goes underneath the building, that's probably not something you want to build over.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay, athletics, last piece, I promise. So, athletics was another really passionate meeting we had. I think we spent 45 minutes to an hour going over the orientation of the fields. This is the orientation that we had last fall, but there's some individuals that wanted to talk about if we had the stands and the press box here for the baseball field, kind of shooting this way, and same with softballs, with the stands on this side going this way. Really revolving around, is this a spectator-oriented plan, where we're making it very convenient to get in and out of stands, and closeness to the gate? Or, is this a player-oriented, and player-safety-oriented plan? These orientations for the field, this is the, these are the recommended orientations for safety with sun and glare. So, we talked for 45 minutes about it. Ultimately, the group said, "Player safety is more important than the..."
Where are we in this, on our campus right now?
I think that's the football.
That little red building at the top is your concession stand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Deviations from our original plan. Tim Bizzetti had a great idea of our middle school soccer practice field, which would require irrigation and grading up north of the middle school. Why would we do that up at the middle school and at this site, when we can do it all in one site, and save some cost there? And so, that's where this practice field comes in. That's the middle school's practice field portion of our, of our bond reference and planning and master plan, got moved to here. The other thing that got fleshed out a little bit more was the desire for about a three, a three-car garage worth of storage space for the baseball, softball complex, as well as this new soccer practice field. This is actually not last fall, this is last February. The discussion about the new stadium was pretty high-level, didn't get down to the nitty-gritties of what kind of storage do we want? And so, that, that's an extra piece that was kind of never accounted for. Also, the, it is a very long walk to get from these stands to the restrooms that are way up north at the football stadium. The stadium master plan that was created several years ago, always kind of talked abstractly of the, the large group restrooms at the football stadium are more than enough to accommodate the baseball stadium as well.
That's my kids, I'm sorry.
So, those bathrooms are more than enough to accommodate the baseball stadium. So, we don't need to build bathrooms for the baseball stadium in its final completion. But, when the, you know, you get down to making these decisions, and you realize that it's a country mile to get to those bathrooms, the group was, was pretty adamant that there needed to be at least some convenience restrooms attached to this field storage building. We have two different proposal locations, one down here, where it's kind of tucked back here and out of the way, and could be maybe a more, we'll call it economical building, you know, a whole barn and metal-sided building. Or, the more desirable location was to be essentially located between all these fields for storage's sake. But, it's a fairly high-profile location, also subject to foul balls. I think you're probably going to want to build something nicer in that location, akin to the rest of your athletics complex. So, the, this group had a lot of desires. They have, they have good taste, they like nice things. So, story's charged right now is to, is to kind of price everything and say where it all comes in. And, we'll use budget, our $2.3 million budget total for this complex as a, that's how we make decisions on if we do, if we do storage building with attached convenience bathrooms and those types of things, so.
So, okay. With this, there's, I assume there's a lot of alternates that will be coming.
Yes, yep, yep.
Because I know we said $2.3 million before, I don't, I'm speaking for myself, not thinking that we would ever just assume that we need $2.3 million worth of, right? So, I don't want it to be like, I don't, I would hope that we don't assume that, wow, we could get these nice fields, and, you know, some level of this for much less, but assume that, well, we did kind of have $2.3 million, so let's use it. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well...
I don't know if that's, if I'm the only one thinking that, but...
The $2.3 million...
You're false in your initial, are you already thinking?
Yeah.
You know, because as you're talking about storage areas and things, I'm recalling conversations when we built the football stadium, and, you know, I mean, we ended up with a little garage, or a little this, and not all the bathrooms that were proposed. So, I'm, I'm...
Hopefully, the boosters pick up on it.
Yeah, right. I mean, there's all sorts of funding, there's all sorts of different avenues for funding, and I'm not trying to close it off, but I mean, like, I just wanted, when you said that, I thought, "Oh, wow, are we going to fill that $2.3 million, or are we just trying to..."
Well, I'm just going with the information that I've been given, is that there was a board prioritization sheet, and board approved budget, and that line item was $2.3 million total project cost for the stadium. I'm actually more concerned with if we're going to be cresting over that. It's going to be tight. It's, it sounds like a lot, it is a lot, a lot of money, but they're big, new athletic fields. Also, like, bleachers made of steel and aluminum, we've all heard the news about tariffs coming in, I'm concerned about, about those going up in cost significantly.
I mean, this is a practice field, as budgeted, as approved by the board. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves in saying, "Yes, this is all competition, and we're ready to roll it out right here," because that's not what we voted on. I love sports, and I hope we can build this, but I'd way rather build that cool building for our kids to learn in, than to have green as grass in the state of Iowa to play baseball on. And, so, I, again, I trust that you have all the paperwork that we voted on, but I'm anxious, I'm anxious that we're putting a lot of excitement in front of our patrons that isn't reflective of the conversation this board had. And so, and Art, this is not new, by the way, right? Like, I totally understand that. I'm saying this maybe to our public and to people in this room, this is not what I voted on. I voted on practice fields, with the possibility to expand it by competition-level stuff. And if we can do all the competition stuff, and the budget we approved, sweet. If not, I'm not interested in doing that project right now. I really want to see us focus on making the best classrooms we can for our kids, and if we have excess money, building some extra green space to practice on, because I do think athletics is a big part of it, but I'm very anxious about what I see right here, based on the conversations this board has had in the last year.
Let's wait till Friday, I think we're getting the car ahead of the horse here, so...
We need to see numbers, we need to understand what things cost, and all those other options.
Art, do we know anything about, you know, we have those big mounds of dirt that are to the south of our stadium, have we heard anything about where those are at?
The geotechnical engineers have taken all their soil borings, actually, any day now we should get their verbal... Actually, any day now, we should get their verbal recommendations on, they'll kind of give us an advanced verbal narrative of the, of what the soil composition is and their recommendations for things like footings and foundations. And then, two weeks after that, we'll get their official geotechnical report. So any, any time now, we should receive those, if you don't...
I thought you were talking about that big lump of dirt out there. You're not talking about that, you're talking about the samples for all of this, or...
I'm talking about the, there goes the, south of the stadium.
Yeah.
There's those big, huge mounds, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
What they're doing is they're doing soil testing to see if that is good dirt, you know, if it's good black dirt, it's worth a lot of money. And they'll probably want to use it.
Or good fill dirt for things like foundations and things like that. So we took soil borings in the middle of that pile to see what it is and how we can use it.
And if it's black dirt and fill dirt mixed together, then you have the cost to haul it away and it's a liability. So that's the...
Okay, that makes sense.
So hold for, hold for filter, or hold for black dirt.
Hold for black dirt.
But I think we know that that's not it.
Next steps, that was long.
We're going on two plus hours.
We're in the last two or three slides, I promise. So next steps.
Sorry, I was looking at some...
Storage construction, they're going to provide us the schematic design cost opinion here at the end of the week. We're charged with through the developing and refining this dot design, our exterior shell, structural elements, and civil work. We'll be doing that throughout the month of June. The interiors and finishes, MEP fixtures, landscaping, that will come in September, as we've already talked about. We're going to lock down the floor plan, basically after, after June, walls aren't moving. They're, it's locked in. We, we're going to select, finalize, and coordinate design between our major disciplines, so a lot of work with our MEP and civil engineers going on behind the scenes. We'll select those exterior materials and finishes with the district leadership, so a lot of it is mimicking and replicating the bricks and pre-cast concretes and things that you already have and block, so a lot of it will be working with Steve also to track down old specs, specifications to figure out what you had. And then also determine a more detailed phasing plan with storage instruction. We've talked kind of in generalities about what gets started after the bid date in September. We'll start to talk about much more specific detail, specific dates for substantial completion and final completion for various bid packages and really start to hammer those out, so. Next deliverable that you'll see, July 7th, we'll have our design development drawing package, outline specifications, an exhaustive code review. We've been through a preliminary code review up to this point, you'll have your exhaustive code review at that time. And then, storage construction will do another cost opinion based on that set, and they'll have that prepared by July 20th. Any more questions?
I think we've...
We asked every single one.
Thank you for having the attention span for it. It's, like I said, it's been a really fun process, your patrons are great. All the folks that we've worked with have just been, you know, really engaged, really excited about the work that's going on, so.
And I, I don't know if I need to say this, but I know there's people who are nervous about things because you see pictures and there's costs. We, we did ask people to design what they wanted, and we would make decisions based off of that. So I don't think there's really reason for people to get too worried, we have decisions to make, right? But we, I think they did to an extent what we asked, and that was...
Very fair.
Right? To come up with ideas and then we can make decisions, that's all.
All right, here we go, move back along, we're going to go to 403. I don't think we did any announcements and celebrations, then we'll resume the normal agenda here, and I'm not a keep us moving. So 403, announcements and celebrations.
Anyone want to add anything to that?
Still wait back there?
Mike's looks, he's got his hand up.
I thought we were skipping it, so I let it go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Way to go.
Yeah. I did want to note that celebration for, for our staff, Chris Johnson is our middle school choir director, and I don't know if some of you have middle school children, I don't know if you went to the spring.
Yes.
It was, it was the most eclectic performance I've ever seen, like, it was amazing. Anyway, he was selected to be the guest connector for the, it's the 33rd annual Opus Honor Choir this November, so I thought that was awesome. A recognition of him, and he does a fantastic job. Our numbers are more than double what they've been in the past, you know, the kids enjoy him and he puts on great performances, but that's an extra recognition for him, I just wanted to...
That's awesome.
I just want to reiterate the celebrations and meeting, those APR goals, and I know some reviews on what those meetings are presented on, to take a lot of pride and I think a lot of what we do throughout the year and what our teachers do with, with the kids, for the kids, shows them what the pride and that's, so, we're very proud.
I have just to go quick, we received STEM grant for the elementary for pint-sized science for our preschoolers. We received a STEM grant for the intermediate for more science, a few elementary in engineering science kits. And then we received STEM grant for the middle school for paper space materials.
Thank you, thank you, Arden. Awesome. All right, keep moving. On 404, board reports, we already talked about the bike path, so the legislative priorities. Lindsay, can you give us some guidance on that? I don't, typically, we have a chance to read it and then do some sort of tally via email as we're going to do.
Yeah, it's the first time, you kind of use last year's as a core document. Review it, our, it has to be by August 10th, but our August 4 meeting is after, so we're going to have to set our priorities at the July meeting.
Okay.
Is it, how many are this, are we asked, is it five?
I think we had five in the past.
Was it three?
We're asking, let's see, we had process, you're the platform, writing, it doesn't say, four or five?
Could we come, we bring back five of your priorities and then we can kind of tally in from there?
Yeah, and just email them, email them to Lindsay and Gail, you know, before the meeting, so that, because we don't want it to be compiling in while we're here, and we usually come out with about the same ones. It'll be the penny tax and...
July 9th is our meeting, so if you can get it in just a little bit before that.
And then if anybody, I kind of did that the last three or four years, so if anybody's ready to take on legislative priorities, it's a pretty easy gig, but you have to go. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to allow for other leadership development for some other folks to go to that, so you guys can kind of think about if you have interest in that.
Well, I did it before John, just in case anybody's curious, I was worried about, you know...
It was a one-day commitment.
So what could be good, Tim, or is your experience in it, or you want to give somebody else the opportunity?
I wanted to give you the opportunity, that's what you had.
Do we have the date of when that is?
It's usually the Wednesday before the convention.
Oh, fine, I'll do it. Okay, I'll do it.
You're going to like it.
I'm going to love it.
Isn't it like in November, 17, 16?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an all right deal.
We don't have to decide now.
Yeah, because I might be interested.
Oh, good.
I'm already down there, right?
Yeah.
Talk about it, and we'll have to take action, John.
And I, I have something I want to share, but I'll be really fast.
Oh, yes, please.
And I have pictures.
Yeah, for the principal thing, I'd love to see those.
So Lindsay, Vic, and Deb...
Do you have a cool mouse?
Just, everybody jump in, what?
Oh, please, that mouse, I feel like...
No, I don't, that was making me nuts. All right.
But just a minute, I got, I have no internet connection, so let me get it on.
You don't have like any proprietary information?
I just, I just hope I put the right pictures in. Did you look at it?
I briefly looked at it.
Is it appropriate?
Oh, no.
I have a picture of Deb on her phone.
You what?
I'm really excited to see this workspace. I was going to look through the presentation.
I've never seen it like it was just...
It's, it was cool to go down there and look at that.
Okay.
I took one picture, and the security guard goes, can I ask you what you took that picture? You come in from the outside and take that, I don't know how many, and nobody asked me.
I know, right? Okay, so last Wednesday, Lindsay and Vic and I went down and Deb and a couple of other folks met us and took us through some collaborative spaces. Just knowing that we don't have the same budget that principal does, but there are a lot of great ideas and ways that we could be innovative in our new spaces. So this is, this is where our trip started, and they have this great little artistic collaborative space, tables, chairs, couches, things, and art to inspire one, two, before, I just thought it was cool, so. All right, this is a smart space, and Deb, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Uh, what?
No? Do you want to talk about anything?
It's just basically a room that's made out of walls that are whiteboard. It's just a different, not a temporary space, those were actually built into that.
Yep, and everything in there's got dual monitors and people were working together, stuff written all over the place, so.
Just a different kind of wall, I guess, is what I would take from that. I mean, are you going to talk about the power?
Yeah, yep, it's there. This is just a picture of workstations on wheels, you know, I mean, which is a great idea. We have, we've had computer labs on wheels, why not have great tables and chairs that can move from space to space? You know, I mean, I think it's important that nothing is like fixed, not nothing, but some things aren't.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, okay. Again, see how fast I can do this? Go ahead. Whiteboard workspace, so, I mean, again, just another place where a team can collaborate, they've got all this white space, but they made it very clear to us that when they're done, it disappears. You know, people don't save stuff there, it's not like you rent the space for a week. Anything you guys want to add?
No, just every workspace was flexible, could be moved around, it could be made into a variety of shapes and designs, I mean, it was, it was pretty awesome.
Yeah, just...
Every workspace had a lot of power to it.
Yeah, the importance of power.
Knowing that you have to be able to plug in.
The thing that I think there's, that I hoped we would get to is, it was really a, this is a 10-year project that we took. We have data-driven analytics built into this whole piece of it, so there's anything here that we are going to keep exactly as it is, just because that's how we built it. So they talked about lights that we have that have sensors on them, chairs that have sensors on them, again, not what we would suggest for our budget, but that actually track and say, how are people actually using the space? They're not using it, then don't leave it that way, change it, adapt. And so that's why these things are all built for that purpose. All of the tables have power that go through them. It's just a table that allows for wiring to go through that, but so that people can prop up and use the space in a variety of ways, plug in or not. Oh, that is me.
It is you, on your phone. So this, this picture, we've got a high table, some high chairs, there were also people standing and working because, you know, we all don't like to sit all the time. And then, we were all very intrigued about the opportunity for storage that was waist-high, provided some workspace in lieu of lockers that don't get used, that cost us small fortune and that people... So this is a case of where they were drawers and employees had drawers that they could use in place of a locker. There's locker pictures coming up.
Interesting concept, though, at principal, they don't have, they don't have like a room, like a teacher has a room, or Deb could probably tell us, I don't know that Deb has a cubicle or a desk or whatever, she could go anywhere in their complex, because they're all, you know, basically on laptops and they can, they can feed from there. And it was just interesting to see the design and how that worked out, and you know something? I was surprised about how quiet it was. I mean, you had teams working together and talking about different things, and I know that's different than maybe high schools or middle school.
Well, we're not a team, but they, we do sometimes act that way, but yeah, nobody has a desk at principal, even some of our vice presidents don't. But they do, we have lots of flexible storage. We back that. The first thing I do when I get to work is I find out where I want to work that day, based on what I have on my plate.
Okay, go ahead, Gail. Wait, we're done wheels, again, just like the tables and chairs, that's a quick one, if you just... Zoom space, I liked this a lot and...
Kind of mottling there.
Yeah, you are, yep. The thing I liked about this is as we were looking, especially in Mike's building, where we have designated flex space and workspace, these areas are right off of a workroom, maybe off of a classroom, but there's just a table, the computer's there, they're able to, they could zoom, they could, you know...
Oh, that's what you guys call that, zoom space, yeah. This is like what we would, we would think of as a virtual, the ability to have virtual classrooms or virtual meetings, so.
Yep, yep.
We don't, at principal, we have hundreds and hundreds of meeting rooms, and some meetings have 100 people, some meetings have three people, some, and we don't want to build all different sized rooms. We don't want to have 30 rooms that fit 50 people. So what we do is we have small rooms that all connect together through technology and similar to like what you guys probably have in some of your rooms, the capability to, we call it Skype, we use Skype, but Zoom to connect rooms virtually. I didn't know what Zoom space meant, sorry, I was like, why?
No, no, that's fine, okay. And then just the idea of breaking up spaces, you know, this is like a little cubicle that would be just a one-person space and, and they said no, a lot of people use those. You've got some desks, you've got some other chairs, just divided up by whiteboards, but, you know, as we move forward in our media centers, I think we have a great deal of space where we could be creative in the middle school and the high school. You know, I, I just think when we look at current big spaces that we have and study spaces and when we start looking how people like to work, we might have some opportunities to break it up in a very simple, inexpensive way. Okay? Locker base, those are what we're going to talk about, so you can see, one would be as tall as our current lockers, but then they have a lot of smaller ones.
These aren't day lockers, they're not, they don't belong to somebody, right? They're just lockers that we use as we need them.
So Deb, what do you, so if a employee at principal goes to a conference somewhere and we get some materials, right? What do they do with that, then? Where do they put that stuff?
Like, you mean like books or something?
Yeah, or, or a binder or a, or a handout or something.
Yeah, so we have shared, we have shared spaces because that's information that we don't want just one person to store away in a desk. So we have like what we would call, they're kind of closet areas, but they're really almost like libraries, where we have shared, shared information. So much of our stuff is just online, we don't have too many books or binders, but...
I'm guessing your, like, your securities division, you know, there's probably binders on...
Oh, yeah. Oh, sure, manuals and things like that, yeah. They, they tend to be in, they would look like a storage closet to you guys, but they're actually, we have access by cards, you can go in and there's, well, we didn't, we didn't see those spaces here. They wouldn't let me bring these guys and stuff like that.
We couldn't even go to the gym.
They wouldn't even let me live in the gym, yeah.
Okay, next one. And then just the importance of power sources, and I thought this was very creative, and you can't really tell on the picture of the carpet, but there's a little bump in there. They took a space that used to be walkway, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, and they've made it into a collaborative space. There were chairs and chidmills and all kinds of things in there, but rather than bust up some pretty, it was, travel team floors, they put down the power strips, so every, there was power everywhere.
They made, yeah, they made them that just slide under a carpet that it's not, just walk right over them, you don't know. So it's not always about running power, doesn't always mean breaking up concrete, there's other options that you can use.
Yep, and then, less of the tables just had those, those little mounted power sources. So I think that might be it.
That's it.
All right. So anyway, it was just a great trip, and I would encourage you guys to go down and meet Deb for lunch and take a walk around sometime, it was pretty cool.
We had principals that were taking classes and doing some orientation things and gone, so there was other people that wanted to go or would like to see some of this stuff, and maybe we could do something else.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, I think, I just want, I told these guys to, never intended, I understand that principal's budget was way over what we would ever assume to do, but at the same time, it's a, it's a good... But at the same time, it's a, it's a good for a couple of reasons. Number one, this, these are the kinds of places our graduates are going to work in. This is how they are going to work, very collaboratively in some cases, not every field. Collaboratively, and I think too, we're not necessarily trying to emulate other schools. Let's look at how other people collaborate, let's take the best of that. What other schools do that we love and what other areas, other sectors that figured out and make it work. So it was kind of an idea thing really more than anything else, just a way to think about things differently.
All right, John, I'm going to hand this back over to you. We're going to do this right here. Now we're resuming normal stuff.
Resuming normal stuff?
Yeah, the 501B, if you haven't done anything there or below.
So 501B is the master contract, B132 for the bond referendum, Architectural Services with Hala Architecture Structure Planning Limited. So this is essentially the master contract. I read through that contract and looked that over. A lot of it references other plans and that sort of thing, but we had our legal team look at it. So unless anyone has any questions, I entertain a motion to approve that document.
So.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved.
This is much better than that.
He is, look how fast he's going.
The amendments, I think the important part to pull out on the revising amendments, as you can see, Hala's fees are in there. We, Gail and Lindsay and I met to discuss those fees that are about 8% of the project. We compared that to what they presented us when we did the long-term planning. And on or about, they're probably about 1% higher. And when we questioned them as to why it was higher than that proposal, they said it was to the nature of this isn't, it was a bit more complex than what they were anticipating at the time. And it probably is. And so, so at any rate, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and we had that discussion with them. And that's where the numbers came in and we, we think we're happy with their work, they're doing what we ask them to do. And I think in light of the discussions that we've had tonight, you know, we're going to make them early money, so.
1% of the total package is kind of a.
Big number.
Big number.
1% of 14 million?
Yep. And so that's why we wanted to, you know, bring that to your attention here and have that, have that discussion, so.
So are those numbers set if we agree to this or is it based on final cost? Are those, are those flexible numbers? Is this a projection or is this, we agreed to pay them?
I, I want to understand, these are, approving these are setting the total.
If project scope increases, fees may be renegotiated.
Between the owner and the architect, so.
And so it would be my assumption that if project scope decreases and if we maybe build.
I don't think that ever happens.
Well, I know, but I mean, I guess I have a little bit of a problem with us agreeing. I don't like one-sided contracts. You know, I mean, if, if we're willing to bite on a percent, an additional percent, because we've been a complex district, I guess.
I think probably what I would guess, though, Kim, from tonight's discussion is, is whatever the savings are, we're going to use those alternative plans to spend it. So in light of that, but I mean, certainly we can, we can ask that question. And I'm, I'm okay with that, but, but I'm guessing with the increases in steel and that sort of thing that we're probably going to be topping out. But I think it's a, it's a fair question to ask and I think we did ask it, didn't we, Gail? That if those things came in less, that those numbers would, but it's a fixed number in the contract, so I would kind of doubt.
Oh, it's a fixed percentage.
So it would have to, if I take board action on this, it would have to be another amendment coming back to the board.
Which would delay what we would need to accomplish.
Right.
Would delay what? I mean, we're already working, right? Are they not going to move forward if we have questions about this?
It hasn't stopped progress yet, even like this contract, this master contract. This is basically for them to do the work.
All right.
But they aren't.
Yeah, so it hasn't yet. So if, I'm assuming this amendment one, two, and three would be approving it as is. And if there is a change, whether it's a reduction or a increase, they have to, it's amendment again. So it would be another amendment coming back to you as a board. At that point, whatever decision you make.
Yeah, so we would not, we'd have to not approve these and then have coming back with, have that language of 1% or whatever the actual costs are, which, you know, I suppose this is, could increase your costs as well, but have to go over.
I mean, it's just as we're looking at pinching pennies all the way along, an additional, what, $140,000 for design, kind of.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
It is, a lot of money. And, and I guess if, you know, two months ago, they would have said, hey, guys, this is a little bigger project, then we anticipated our fees are going to be a little higher. That's different than just all of a sudden like presenting us with a contract and saying.
Yeah, that's what they meant. That's what day we meet last week.
Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Something like that, yeah.
So I mean, they met with us ahead of time, so I mean, it wasn't like.
I kind of get why you like working.
Yeah.
We're engaged, but I guess that makes us.
It was a pretty detailed meeting of everything we wanted to want to detail.
So any changes to this would come to us as an amendment. So we're really just saying, this is what we're agreeing to. We're not agreeing to anything higher.
Right, because then that's, the scope is increased and all that sort of thing. The other question I asked them is, is does this conclude all the bills paid current to the time? And what was the outstanding bills?
Well, they, the outstanding bill is in the, they want, they submitted a bill and it's in the payments tonight.
And I believe this was all inclusive of the charges.
The outstanding bill plus.
It's, it's part of the bills to be approved tonight is there. Assuming that these are approved, they already submitted bills for the capital projects, which is 194,708. Of.
Of the 842 order.
It's like a draw on this total bill, essentially. I guess I won't stand in the way of moving forward, but I guess it would be my hope that as we move forward, they understand that they should alert us before they decide to change their percentage.
And which they can't, you know, this is, this is what they're tied to. But it'll be us agreeing to expanding the scope.
Right.
And so I think, I think we're going to have to really be disciplined to keep the scope where it's at and.
I just, this, this process is so different than the other process I've gone through in both the middle school and the high school. And we as a board are, and, and I appreciate that our administrative team and Lindsay are spending countless hours doing a lot of work. But, and I'm just going to throw in an example of, you know, Stacey's school, decisions were made on behalf of her school and this project that she found out about when the whole collective group did. And there was no say, no options, no whatever. And I just kind of feel like we're just being handed what's going to happen and how it's going to happen and what it's going to cost. And that we don't have a lot to go back and forth. And maybe that's because it's more of a committee process this time. I don't know, but I just don't want to be surprised with more $140,000 hoops, if that could be avoided in the future.
Entertain a motion to approve the revised amendments one, two, and three of the master contract. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved.
Can I agree with what you're saying, by the way? I'm just going to be talking about all this stuff more.
And then for the Walsh, the Walsh security?
Yep, I'm going to, I'm going to take a quick little snap at this and I got two building principals that I'm sure would like to tell you a little bit more about it. One of the things that we've tried to do is we got our current summer project that's going on right now with secure, safe and secure entrances. What we found out was, probably when Vic's building was built, we looked at doing this, but at that time, it wasn't something that was feasible. And so he has a setup as far as a safe and secure entrance. Right now, it's cheaper for us to go with a network project for basically our intermediate, our elementary, and we can tie in the middle school. And it's not, you know, tied in free, by the way. If you take a look at the overall process there, we're working with John Williams. And John Williams is the general contractor for the summer project. He's with the HPC. And I don't know if the ladies want to add anything, but I think he's really been helpful. Go ahead, are you going to add something, Stacey? You look like you want to say something.
I'm sure I will.
The thing that they've done is, in both Amy and Stacey's building is, they have, we have $10,000 allotted per building for what, the brains? Is that what we've been told? Of the security system. So we've talked to Walsh and Walsh has a state bid, so we know that we're getting the most competitive bid. Well, what we're looking at doing is this. We're looking at taking this and combining this so that we can have a networking system that will cover all three of the buildings that we're talking about, middle, intermediate, and elementary. There's $20,000 that have been allotted between the two, the intermediate and elementary. So if I look at what I have on this, let me see if I have my.
And the high school has it already, Lindsay?
The high school has a little bit different form and then we can add to the high school to that later. Is that the way that you guys understand it?
The high school's card readers, the fobs are all independent. Each door is independent of the others. So like when I looked at doing card readers or fobs at the middle school currently, we have codes, keypads. And so you could do either independent or you could do a network where they all talk together and there's one central place that can program them to get a readout from them. So high school currently, every fob is independent of the others, is the way that building's set up.
If you network them, do you have the opportunity to like control all of them at one time?
Yes.
That's what's nice about it.
The high school will have to add, to have to retrofit down the road to get to that. But this would allow all the other three buildings.
So we can unlock or we could lock down.
We're not just putting them under Soviet, an 805, everybody's locked. Schedule it and it locks.
You can lock and unlock on the schedule. You can lock or unlock from, like if, if Amy were out of the building, she could pull up an app on her phone. If Mr. Beecher called her today, you know, whatever, she could lock down right from her phone. Someone from central office could lock down Amy building if they wanted to.
So this is, this is like ultimately the best thing for student safety? Yes.
And the system that we're purchasing will hold the high school once we want to move.
Okay.
The other thing, Kim, is not only is it, for their buildings, not only is it better, it's actually cheaper than going and doing independence. What I'm wanting to do is hop on the back.
So what we'd look at is, in Amy's building where it says Intermediate School, 14,346, we'd also take the $7,215. That's I guess putting together some of the brains, if you want to say, for that. And then there's another part, and Stacey, she made a good comment when we left the meeting the other day. And that was the fact that in her building, she's, if you go into her building now, there's going to be, there'll be like a, basically a fob reader, is that right, Stacey? That would be, so like if, if her staff wants to come in, they scan the fob reader they're in. So the other part that would be added to that would be the $3,600. So what, here's what I have for a total. I've got a great deal from Walsh. And that is, if I take all those numbers and add them together, I get $25,161. How much did I say that they gave us for the brains?
20.
So just subtract, yep, you're exactly right. Good listener. You subtract that out and it's $5,161.
More.
More. Am I missing something, Stacey?
No, I just think it's important to, so here's an example of where they had set aside this $10,000. So this right now is not within the scope of the bid that HPC gave us for the buildings, for the secure entrances. Hala earmarks 20,000 of the total budget, but not of the HPC contract. So that's where either 20,000 is over and above what we're currently paying HPC. Does that make sense?
So we didn't have $10,000 earmarked for that.
So basically, Hala put a bid out that had no brain, no way to actually use the front door systems that we would need. Does that make sense?
So we were just building it without.
We were basically just being able to use it.
With no brains.
And there was a chunk allocated.
There's a chunk allocated towards the budget.
Being done of what, what we needed, for what we.
And that's what, that's what we were talking about, about the 20,000.
We want to make sure.
And when they set aside the $20,000 of that initial budget between the $10,000 per building of those safe and secure entrance doors, we asked this very specific question of, well, is that based on because you should be able to get one for $10,000? Or that's the going price or, no, it was just, here's the budget. This is how much we're going to set aside of the budget. Does that make sense? I mean, no, it doesn't make sense, but it, that's what we were to understand what you're saying.
Well, I'm in a budget that would mean that there was money set aside for it, but what you're telling me is there wasn't.
There is, there was money set aside. So when they came forward with that number, that it was going to be approximately 300,000 at the elementary, somewhere that all heard.
The 20 wasn't in there?
It's within that benchmark of theirs, but it is not in the HPC contract.
It's not in the bid.
They didn't include it in the bid.
We budgeted it, but they didn't include the work in the bid or the.
So HPC consumed what, what we anticipated that they were going to use.
Well, I know the other part was, is because we had to replace the doors and they weren't even originally going to do that, right?
They're still not.
Was that the wrong building?
Right now, they are not, that's another question too, is the building, the doors that are in my existing building that are not part of that bid as well.
My question is, is this a PEPAL deal then?
Right now, it shouldn't be a PEPAL deal. What I look at it as, and if you guys look back there, that we've talked about this. If you take and add up the intermediate, the elementary, and then the 3,600, is it, for Stacy's? That's a total of $25,161. Now, that 20,000, we should be able to use for something there, correct?
Shouldn't it come out of the voted?
Bond?
Bond, and, I mean, isn't that the way it's supposed to work? Aren't we supposed to complete projects in our order of priority and it just comes off? And whatever's left, we make a decision. If we're going to finish the last project on the list, if we're going to use PEPAL money. Isn't that how it's supposed to go down?
And I kind of relate that later on in the financials. We're running all expenses through the capital project account number. So anything dealing with any of our construction projects, we're running through a fund 31. So we have a total capture of all projects. At some point in time, if there's a deficit, when we're all said and done, then we'll, we'll move funds. But we need to have all the expenditures in one location. I feel like we have capital projects, we have all the expenses running through that. And then at some point in time, if we need to move funds from PEPAL sales tax, we will. But we need to have all the expenses in one fund.
I don't want to miss something. You said, yeah, maybe you're going to say it again.
No, I, I just, I, I have a real problem voting for us to spend PEPAL funds to do something that we committed to doing and, and committed to doing properly, not, not just throwing it together so we could say that it was done. And so that we can use bond money on something else. I have a huge problem with that and we're just starting this process.
And I agree with you. So what I would say that we, what I think that needs to happen here is we need to use bond money to pay for this because this is for the safe and secure entrance.
Yeah, and that was part of the.
And Amy, Amy, when she was talking about her building at one time, we were going to use the old doors. We said, that doesn't make any sense. If you guys, I don't know, I was kidding Stacy yesterday about snapping a picture of the doors in her building. If we, if we use the doors in her building, reuse those, we're silly.
But it doesn't make sense to put $7,000 worth of equipment on a door that can be broken down or broken through. Or does it shut?
Yes.
What is the point?
Yes, I agree 100%.
Okay, so hold on, hold on. So this is, I just want to be clear, like, Kim, what you're saying, this is the fun part of all the stuff we do.
Well, the summary is, is we're going to have more need for things than we have money available. This is one we have to do, so I don't think we need to.
Sure, that's, that's true, but we did put together and voted on a prioritized list. And this is number one priority.
Right.
So this gets money first.
Yes.
And we'll just start walking down that list, right?
Well, that's my opinion.
This is in the scope of what we talked about with the voters' pass, we have to do this, is my view on this.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved.
Can I just have a clarification?
I just have a fast question, just so I can picture this right. So we had it budgeted, when they.
So, we had it budgeted, when they bid, they included a bid, and it was low, because it didn't include all of the work that we originally planned. Is that like in a nutshell that I...
But it wasn't in the specifications of the bid, right?
No, it wasn't in the specifications, so that's why it was a bid.
Right.
Yeah, right, no, but I just, I'm saying, the money was budgeted, it wasn't included, HPC wasn't told to do it. The bid came in low, just because it wasn't for all of the work that we thought we were getting. Okay.
Another clarification is, is this was bid two years ago, before schools were getting shot up every week, so...
Oh, they were getting shot up then?
Well, I mean, there was some, but I just meant, it's gone up, way up on the...
No, I, I thank you, I just wanted to make sure I got that right.
Just a clarification, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I apologize. Uh, just a clarification, so that I know, and I want everyone back there that's involved with this, as we've looked at it, what we're looking at doing is, we're looking at taking the intermediate price, the elementary price, and the new doors, that would be the exterior doors in the elementary, and putting those into the bond dollars.
Absolutely.
Did I say anything wrong back there?
And that's all for $25,000, right?
No, that bid does not yet include the elementary doors. We do not.
Oh yeah, that does include the, thank you.
So this is just for the system?
For the security system.
Not the new doors for the elementary.
And we tried, um, we've been in contact with John, uh, on this, he had thought, matter of fact, I thought he would give back to me today, we talked earlier, and, uh, we're waiting for Walsh to give us, I would guess that you're looking at between $5,000 and $10,000 for exterior doors in that building. I think 10 is maybe high, but the thing that we talked about, and if you look at her entryway, or not her entryway, but the elementary entryway, um, there's, there's the framing and stuff like that, and we're trying to see if we're going to do that through, uh, with aluminum, or if we're going to do it with, uh, steel. Make sense?
Yep.
Good? Yeah.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. Um, consideration of the sealed bids opened and reviewed by the superintendent of schools, secretary of the board, and financial advisor, not to exceed 10 million, general obligation school bond, series 2018.
They gave a presentation while you were...
Okay, okay, and then how close was that to our estimation? I see the winning bid was 3.52%. Do you recall what it was?
He said it was fairly close, but I don't know if he exactly said exactly what we knew.
Okay, but it was fairly close, that's all.
Very, very close.
And he said, he also, he also gave guidance, this is very similar to what other districts in our area in the last month or so, however.
See, and he also said, you can't compare it to like Ames, and those places.
Did you guys have a motion to approve this already then?
No, not yet. We're waiting for you. You're the money guy.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve Robert W. Baird and Co.'s bid with an all-in cost of 3.52, trailing off. With regard to, uh, the winning bid, our general obligation bonds, do we have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. Congratulations, board, and back row, job well done.
We're now with debt. More, more.
Okay, uh, next I'd entertain a motion of a resolution directing sales not to exceed 10,000 of general obligation school bond, series 2018. Can I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Did you say 10,000?
10 million.
10 million.
I could have said 10,000.
Good job, you said 10,000.
10 million.
Did you like to say 10 million?
I'll repeat that. Entertain a motion to approve a resolution directing sale not to exceed 10 million in general obligation school bond, series 2018. Now I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
One from Walsh.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. That would not be good.
I hate to interrupt him, because boy, he's going along in a great fashion. And on the next one, I just want you to look at it, it's up on the, uh, chart there, it's not the one for the safe and secure for middle school.
Are we going to order there?
Are we ready for 5.0?
Sorry, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Go ahead.
Same company, different.
Yeah, what's happening is, uh, the, the situation, whoops, the, the situation on the middle school is, this is a part of the brains too. So what I did was, and, and I don't know how you want to look at it, uh, when we talked about this, the actual server is going to be held at the middle school, is that right, Mike?
Yeah, so that number, uh, is for me to do, I, I can't, I don't have my mask on, I'm sorry, I can't.
10,000?
Oh, it's 15,309.
So, so that will give me the ability to have fob access.
I need something with the bottom number too. Sorry, go ahead, sorry.
It'll give me the ability to have fob access in my front entry, as opposed to that key code, which, you know, the first thing that code is, once it codes out, you have no control over it, this, you know, we have some control over it. And also putting a fob access on our back, um, loading dock, the vestibule, the basketball vestibule, a key rep, uh, carb reader is included in that, but it was going to be an independent one, but the, the, you know, they can put in one that will connect to the network system, so that, that vestibule will be paid for through the bond. So the 10,000 is for, uh, me to do my front entry, what, the, the handicap accessible door, the back door, and then there's another number for the other three doors.
Yeah, it's a 40's...
868.
Thank you.
So that's the 15.
Yeah, that's the 15. The question was, and we, we came about this because we had our meetings with our, uh, the sheriff's office and things like that, and so, when we were talking about it, we knew that we had to do some things in that building that's a little bit different than maybe the other two. I had talked about whether this would be a PEPAL item or not, because it wasn't necessarily put into the bond overall. Safe and secure entrances were at the elementary and the intermediate. But when we talked about it, if we had to do something, this could be something that would come out of PEPAL.
I'm not opposed, because it's an addition.
Yeah. Did I?
Is this new doors too, or no?
No.
We could use the doors you have.
Yes, this would, this would be retrofitting the current doors, they just put some electric strikes in there.
And then it works, okay.
So we, so we're using...
I mean, this, this wasn't in there, and so I'm not opposed to using PEPAL funds for something we're adding in, um, but it makes sense that we do it at the same time, because obviously it's going to be less expensive. Yep.
Any questions? Any comments? Entertain a motion to approve 15,309 to rework some of the safe and secure entrances at the middle school.
Through PEPAL, right?
Through PEPAL.
Through PEPAL? What?
So moved.
So moved, thank you.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Right.
All opposed? Stands approved.
Let me make you a cheat sheet Deb.
Okay, uh, board policies, is there anything in there Lindsay, that you need to pull out of there, or can we...
Really, what happens is, I think the first ones, I didn't know if you need to actually make official action on, do they have to, on the first reading?
No.
Actually, I don't think.
I think you're right. What we've done is, um, the first, it, it has the board policy, you can tell what ours is there, and you can tell where IASB's is. Uh, it is something, and I know some of the people that are in the policy committee, this is just a, a few of them that have come out from, uh, IASB, and I'm not trying to shortchange you on your duties, uh, but these are a couple that they wanted to, they wanted to throw out, and I wanted to make sure that we had in there. What I would ask is that you take them home, look at them, uh, you can see the difference between the two, I don't know if there's any...
The election changed from September to November.
Yep.
And, um, seeing, there's, I'm going through here.
There you go.
A lot of it is taking out the master contract language.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, my only guidance, because I read through all these, because I love this stuff, is I would really like us to think as a board, like, what is the right wording to not, um, devalue the commitments we're making to our teacher and language, teachers and language? I just, the, the whole collective bargaining thing, I just, I get nervous, uh, because it's, begins to remove some of the guarantees that, that we have in language to our teachers, and the last thing I want to do is, is have some language in our, in our policies that again, kind of like, just keeps poking that little thorn in them. So, again, I don't, I don't have any problem with any of these policies, but like, all of this language is going to be changing over time, as we move away, like, from words like guaranteed, you know, lanes and year increments, and then move into sort of like, oh, if we have budget, maybe we'll, you know, give you a raise, and like, that just gets, I, I just get nervous, we have to be really careful with that language. So as you read it, we don't have to discuss it now, read this stuff, think about it, is this the language we want? We can deviate from IASB, um, I'm not suggesting we should, but we really should be thinking about it.
We can, um, the master contract will look different, because, um, most of the items are suggested to move into our handbook, and then, but then whatever you have in the master contract, which doesn't end until 20, 20. So, um, whatever stays in the master contract, you know, that, that's going to look different. And we already have recommendations from our legal counsel about what should, but you know, that is two or three years away, that.
Yep.
So, um, but everything will move from the master contract, not everything, but most of the things will move from master contract to a, our handbook that we currently have. And they do mirror each other, other than the specific language for licensed teachers.
Any other questions on the policies?
Other fun ones.
Okay, well...
We don't take any action on that, right?
Nope, we'll bring it back in 30 days.
Okay, but if you find something, just shoot me an email and say, I don't, I don't like the way that this sounds, I don't like, it's like taking away the privileges of our, of our certified staff, I don't want to try to do that.
I, I was just going to ask, um, if, I don't know, do you guys meet, or do you guys do this individually, and just communicate via email?
When Lindsay scheduled it, we meet.
This is a policy purmer that came out.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
What happens is...
I just wondered if I, I know, I'm not trying to like add myself to your group, but I...
She's trying to add herself to the group.
I'd like to be, well, because I feel like it's a good way for me to understand...
Someone has to step down.
Oh, you do? Because you can't, oh, you can't have...
Yeah, but what happens though Deb is, like, we, Deb, when we go do a series, like, if we do the 400 series, that's when they come in. The policy purmers are ones that we just usually fire out.
Got it.
You can't miss that. That was good, learning a lot sitting next to you John.
I used it on my phone.
My first time running the meeting, we're already 10 minutes over, and we haven't even gotten down.
I thought that 7:30 was the title.
We started at 4:00.
So for agenda item, I'll try to make up some time here. Uh, for the board meeting schedules, everybody good with the second Mondays, is what was your board?
Yeah. We kind of have, um, now, Hala just mentioned, Art just mentioned that a special board meeting on separate, September 18th, so I might as well add that in there.
Okay.
And then, um, what we do is, you know, you have a, kind of have an idea of what we do when, um, and then what I'll do is, we'll condense these dates, and then we'll publish them on the website.
Yeah, that's a great idea, thanks for putting that together.
But those special, we're, we're just trying to stick with the Mondays essentially, but they're like the Saturday.
But this is kind of nice to have some of your agenda items, so if you feel passionate about any of those, it gives you, you know, 30 days ahead that you can be like, hey, let's talk about this.
And this is basically just for us, um, just, I, I refer to it every board meeting. And it's a moving document, I add, subtract, you know, move things, so it's just for our, our...
And the 7th, September 18th meeting, that would be for what, what the nature of the meeting called?
Review Hala bids, it's the bidding track for our project.
Okay, we get the bids.
So it's going to be a, I'm assuming it's going to be a special board meeting, or will be a special board meeting, but it's going to be a reference to read, um, the bid, the project bids, yeah.
Okay.
Because I think they go up on 11.
So it's a weekly, okay, and that's when we'd open those, okay, very good. Um, let's see, the 2017-18 Year End Career and Technical Education Advisory Council Report, CTE report.
Is it, I know a couple of you said on that, is there anything special that you want to bring out?
No, the technical, the Advisory Council report is, is a verification way of showing that they meet regularly, that they document their meetings, that they're doing things during their meetings, that they're looking at programs of study, that they're looking at, you know, students and completion rates. The actual CTE report is due in three days, so, um, the Advisory Council is meeting regularly, it's made up of local patrons that are interested in, in career tech at programs.
Is it, is it beneficial?
Yes, yeah, their input is great, they're very beneficial and, they're their voice to what's really going on in community, and how we can bring that into schools.
Yeah, so it's great. Okay, um, is there anything we need to do with that? Do we need to just accept that report?
Accept it.
Entertain a motion to accept that CTE report?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stands approved. Uh, Title I, Parental Involvement Policy in Parent Compact?
These are just, every year, we just have to approve, there's no changes from last year, for either.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
I'm much better.
I'm sorry, I lost a second on that one.
I did.
Okay, thanks. I was still...
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the extension of the AGCO tractor lease, uh, for the Massey Ferguson tractor, tractor through the year 2020. Anybody want to make that motion?
This is a free lease.
Oh, so moved.
Yeah.
So you guys are aware, we do have insurance on it, you know, FFAs.
We provide this attract that we can use for that.
Yeah.
What a wonderful.
That's a great gift.
If we move one of those twice, can we get a second tractor, or?
Is that a motion, Brandon?
Yeah. Yeah, no, no.
He moved, I seconded.
Okay.
Oh, no, I did, I already so moved, you already, so I already seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved. And then, request from Brandon Blombom to graduate early for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year.
You wanna say anything about that, Nick?
Met with family, met with Brandon, he's in good standing, he only needs just a handful of credits. He has a plan with Mr. Jacobson in place to get those credits. Family is moving out of state, and he's looking to finish early, so he can go with his family and potentially start college, or just be with his family during that transition period. So, he's a great standing, outstanding student, outstanding man, no concerns.
So, Dan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved. Entertain a motion to approve the Grant Wood AEA Computer Services Agreement for fiscal year two thousand nineteen for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, I'll entertain a motion.
There was no increase, it was the same as last year.
Wow.
It's for our financial and payroll.
That's nice.
So, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved.
And this comes out in PEPAL, this technology.
Oh, that's good. Let's see. Action on the administration's Contract of Employment Recommendations. We need to approve the administrator's contracts. Is there any discussion, any questions from the board regarding those contracts?
There's an asterisk down here, if you remember, I just wanna remind you that Lindsay, the dollar amount was not set at that time, but it was, the contract was approved March seventh.
I just wanna add that these people do a great job, and I know that, you know, as you're looking through there, and you're looking at different numbers and things like that, but I guess the biggest thing that I would wanna make sure is that they are doing a great job on the overall process.
Are you checking to make sure you're on there, Deb?
Yeah.
Did we forget you?
No, he's there. Is this just natural, like, you want summer two years and summer one? Are those just designated that way, or is it a rolling, like?
A lot of times, the principals billing, principals of the administrative jury are two. If they're, if they're something different than that, they're one, and a superintendent can be three.
Entertain a motion to approve those contracts.
So moved.
Oh, go ahead, Kim, Kim's got it.
Kim's got it. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stands approved. Thank you for your service.
It's spicy.
It's curly. Will you show that one more time, Gil? I'm sorry, just a minute.
Oh, wait, we're, it's already gone, it's already approved.
Twenty thousand days, you added those up and those equal twenty thousand days?
Isn't that crazy?
Is that the dollar increase?
No, 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 that's the increase. What? It's, it's the total increase.
It's just dollars.
You move the chart just like.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a two-point-eight-one, yeah. I'm sorry, I lost it, magic for twenty. No, the math's not right for that.
Yeah.
Anything on the financial reports? Maybe you have a summary, summary on that?
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Let me just, I'm not even gonna bring it up, if you don't, I'm just gonna go through. Everything's on target, and some things I wanted to talk about is, we created a Fund Thirty-One. So, let me talk about that a little bit. And Fund Thirty-One is our new construction projects. So, as you look at, we're gonna have expenses, this is our cash, our balance. So, here's Fund Thirty-One, and we show a deficit right now of seventeen thousand four forty-three, which we paid our S and P, our, for the bonding process. So, what we're gonna do is, all these funds are in the same checking account, which is nice. So, as you see this, we are gonna funnel all expenses for the capital projects, for all of our construction, through the capital projects. At some point in time, if we need to transfer funds from PEPAL, from Sales Tax, we'll do it. We will also receive the revenue from our bond sale in here. Today, we received a hundred thousand dollars, so that will be in there. So, we need to keep it all, I felt that we need to keep it all at one location, instead of spending a little bit of PEPAL and then coming back, you know, let's just run it all through capital projects. Later, at a later time, we can transfer funds if need to.
Even in the case of, of what we agreed on for the middle school?
The middle school, I think we, we talked about it would be PEPAL, because that was not in the scope.
Okay, so you will keep it coming off the running total that we see for PEPAL, when we make those decisions?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
For the capital projects, what we believe, what we've been doing here is, we've been keeping, it's broken up in four projects, or actually five, because the elementary school, summer project, then we have those four project numbers, you know, seventeen-one-one-five is the safe entry, eighteen-oh-two-four is, you know, they've got numbers. So, all those project numbers will be running through the capital projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's new, and the, I sent out the utility usage. Did you, were you able to see that? Great information going forward, we can see if we have, I did not realize a line utility provides gas and electricity for us. That went up, didn't it? And, yeah, remember, we had purchase services, we were like, what is going on, you know? So, we did a spreadsheet on the usage, and we have a full twelve months in there, and I shared it with the board. So, we'll be using that to go forward, that will also be an indicator, and we'll be able to see the target of going forward in our efficiencies or our usage, and we can analyze it for comparison of all of our projects.
Well, maybe, just unbelievably hot, you know, for.
Yeah, right, well, schools. The other thing I wanted to mention is the nutrition, I wanna explain that a little bit. Our nutrition report, it's a little funky, because we had to, we had one serving day in June, and so, I had to put a claim for May and June, but just keep in mind, our revenues are actually caught between May and June. We still have people, we had to record sales in June, in the May, I know it's funky, but we haven't collected all the funds. From how it works is, like, the revenue is, the student, we get it from the machine. The student is sold a meal or à la carte, but they may not have money in their account. So, we don't have the funds. So, we may collect the funds June fifteenth, June, so we had to do some things. So, this will, this will clean, this will be cleaner the next, as we go through June. We're caught between two months, ending in June, and, so not all the money has hit the bank yet. Also, rough track when people make payments, it's a three-day delay, so, just wanna mention that. Other than that, does anybody else have it? I was just wanting to highlight those things, that's what I had for highlights.
What did you do?
The bills, one more thing on the bills is, the, on the general fund, we have, the first eight bills listed in the general fund is ninety percent of the total of the bills. So, I just wanted to mention that. We have Ames Community School District for Tuition. So, between now and through August, how we, just to familiarize, how we do finances for the school is, I will only report the cash in the bank at your July meeting. We actually just reconcile cash, and that's it, basically. Then, we leave the books open for sixty days, so we don't actually close the books till mid-August or till the end of August, when we capture all the money from the state, all the grants, and then we actually do a close. So, there'll be lots of bills, lots of, you know, some revenue for tuitions coming through and going out. Really high active time of big bills, specialized tuition, open enrollment tuitions, some so-called grants that are, the state has, they don't give out to the end, after you spend the money, then they reimburse you, some things like that. So, just kinda want to remind you on how that, from now until August, how that works. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you, Gil. Public forum, is there anybody that would like to talk, discuss any of these issues? Have any interest in that? All right. Our last item is, you can see this consent agenda, there's minutes, bills, financial reports, personnel, open enrollment, and fundraisers, is any of those items that any board members would like to pull off to discuss?
I don't have any fundraisers, so if you're not looking for any.
Good.
There's, I think there's a major saver, it was the next thing coming up, and that was Clarback, or not, it's August, I think.
Good, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.